Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Chairwoman Makita Scott. I now call to order the meeting of the Board of Education of Baltimore County for Tuesday, September 14th, 2021. I invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag to be led by Mr. Thomas. We will then have a moment of silence in recognition of those who have served education in Baltimore County.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being held both in person and by phone by board members and streamed online through Microsoft Teams and broadcasted through BCPSTV, Comcast Xfinity, Channel 73, Verizon Files, Channel 34. In order to efficiently conduct this meeting, all voting items this evening will be done by roll call vote. The first item on the agenda is the consideration of the September 14th Agenda. Dr. Williams, are there any additions or changes to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, I'm unaware of any changes or additions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Hearing none, the agenda stands as presented. Scover, do we need to have a roll call vote for this? No? Okay, we can go on. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Matters, and for that I call on Ms. Anderson.
Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chairwoman Hen, Superintendent Williams, and members of the Board. I would like the Board's consent for the following Personnel Matters: Terminations.
Sorry, any questions? No? Please proceed.
Retirements.
Questions? Please proceed.
Resignations.
Any questions, board members? None? Please proceed.
Leaves.
Any questions? None? Please proceed.
Deceased: recognition of service.
Any questions? None? Please proceed.
Certificated appointments.
Any questions? None? Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Matters as presented in Exhibits D1 through D6?
So moved. Causey?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Pastor?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries. Dr. Williams?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I am bringing forward the following administrative appointments for your approval: Principal of Powhatan Elementary School; Assistant Principal Baltimore Highlands Elementary School; Assistant Principal Deer Park Middle Magnet School; Assistant Principal Sudbrook Magnet Middle School; Supervisor, Teaching and Learning, Office of Teaching and Learning; Supervisor, Special Projects, Department of Educational Options; Specialist, Office of Equity and Cultural Proficiency; Specialist, Office of Digital Safety, Educational Technology, and Library and Media Programs; and Coordinator, Visual Arts, Office of Visual Arts.
Thank you. I think, and I'm not sure if we already did this, they have the next item on the agenda is Administrative Appointments. Is that what you just went over?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as presented in Exhibit E-1?
So moved, Ms. Pastor.
Is there a second?
Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn, any discussion? Questions? No? Thank you. May I have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Scover?
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Pastor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
So our first appointment is Megan D. Elwood as the Supervisor, Teaching and Learning, Office of Teaching and Learning. She brings to us 14 years in Baltimore County Public Schools. Her previous position was a Specialist in that office, and she has served as a teacher in the Office of Special Education as well as Woodlawn Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Elwood. Our next appointment, yes, is Courtney J. Griffin as Principal of Powhatan Elementary School. She brings to us 17.1 years of service in Baltimore County. She served as Assistant Principal at Powhatan as well as Bedford and Powhatan again. She served as a classroom teacher at Powhatan as well as Newtown Elementary and Halsted Academy. She was a part of the Aspiring Leader in 2013. Congratulations, Principal Griffin. Our next appointment is Tiffany M. Harris as the Assistant Principal at Sudbrook Magnet Middle School. She brings to us 19.1 years of service in Baltimore County. She has served as a special ed teacher at Northwest Academy of Health Sciences. She served as a HR officer in the Office of Staffing as well as Assistant Principal at Western School of Technology and Lansdowne Middle School. She served as a resource teacher in the Office of Special Education as well as a special ed teacher in Wyman Elementary. She also brings prior experience in Baltimore City Public Schools and Prince George's County Public Schools. Congratulations, Ms. Harris. Next is Casey Kirk as Supervisor, Special Projects, Department of Educational Options. Welcome to Baltimore County Public Schools. She served as the Academic Coordinator in Juvenile Service Education in Maryland State Department of Education. She served previous positions in MSDE as the Learning Management System Manager, Online Professional Learning Specialist, and Professional Learning Specialist. She served as a high school literacy teacher at Thomas Stone High School in Charles County Public Schools and an English teacher at Great Mills High School in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Welcome aboard, Ms. Kirk. Next is Keith M. Lewis, Specialist in the Office of Equity and Cultural Proficiency. He served as a consulting teacher at Lock Raven High School. Previous to that, he served as a social studies teacher at Lock Raven Technical Academy, Deer Park Middle Magnet School, and previously he served as a teacher at Roland Park Elementary Middle School. He brings to us 21.1 years of service in Baltimore County. Congratulations, Mr. Lewis. Next is Shelby Small, Assistant Principal at Baltimore Highlands Elementary School. She brings 12.1 years of service in Baltimore County. She served as a resource teacher at Lansdowne Middle School as well as a mathematics teacher at Lansdowne Middle School. Congratulations, Ms. Small. I like those cheers. Thank you. And next is Ms. Suhala Tinley, Specialist in the Office of Digital Safety, Educational Technology, and Library and Media Programs. She brings to us 13.9 years of service in Baltimore County. She served as the Library Science Media Teacher at Hereford High, Franklin High. She also served as an English teacher at George Washington Carver Center for Arts and Technology and Patapsco High School. Congratulations, Ms. Tinley. Next, we have, our next appointment is Ryan W. Twinley as the Coordinator of Visual Arts of Office of Visual Arts. He brings to us 10.1 years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, he served as the Supervisor in the Visual Arts, Office of Visual Arts, as well as an art teacher at Parkville High School. Congratulations, Mr. Twinley. Our last appointment is Alexis N. Wiley as Assistant Principal at Deer Park Middle Magnet School. She brings to us 9.1 years of service in Baltimore County. Previously, she served as the Resource Teacher in the Department of Academics in English Language Arts. She also served as an English teacher at Woodlawn Middle as well as Southwest Academy. She also served as a special ed self-contained teacher at Southwest Academy. Once again, I would like to thank our Department of Human Resources, our community superintendents, as well as our chiefs and all of the staff that were very instrumental in filling these vacancies. Congratulations to all who were appointed tonight.
Congratulations to everyone, and thank you, Dr. Williams. Our next item is public comment. This is one of the opportunities the Board provides to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. The members of the Board appreciate hearing from interested citizens. As appropriate, we will refer your concerns to the Superintendent for follow-up by his staff. The Board of Education will conduct the public comment portion of the meeting by allowing those who register to speak to attend in person. Registration was open to the public one week prior to tonight's board meeting and was closed at 3:00 PM yesterday for anyone wishing to speak at this evening's meeting. Board practice limits to 10, the number of speakers at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers were selected randomly using an electronic selection process from all registrations received within the designated timeframe. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Of course, if fewer than 10 registrants, registrations are received, all who registered will be permitted to speak. However, no speaker substitutions will be allowed. While we encourage public input on policy, programs, and practices within the purview of this Board and this school system, this is not the proper forum to address specific student or employee matters or to comment on matters that do not relate to public education in Baltimore County. We encourage everyone to utilize existing dispute resolution processes as appropriate. I remind everyone that inappropriate personal remarks or other behavior that disrupts or interferes with the conduct of this meeting are out of order. I ask speakers to observe the three-minute time clock, which will let you know when your time is up. Please conclude your remarks when you hear the tone or see that time has expired. The microphone will be turned off at the end of your time, and it could be turned off if a speaker addresses specific student or employee matters or is commenting on matters not related to public education in Baltimore County. If not selected, the public may submit their comments to the Board members via email@boe@bcps.org. More information is provided on the Board's website at bcps.org under Board of Education: Participation by the Public. It is the practice of this Board to allow elected officials to provide their comments to the Board, so the first that we have to speak is Senator Chris West. Is the Senator here? Thank you, and welcome, Senator West.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, and thank you once again for affording me this opportunity to address the Board. Dr. Hager, at the work session two weeks ago, you asked Mr. Dixitt the following question: At the most recent board meeting, Senator West proposed what he described as a win-win solution, which was to extend the 15-year MyIPass plan to 16 years and add $32 million to the total cost, which by percentage, when you're looking at the enormous price tag, is a very small amount. With this, he said, "We could complete all of the specified replacements and renovations proposed by MyIPass and also replace Towson and Delaney." I was very intrigued by that. We all love a win-win. Were his calculations correct? Mr. Dixitt replied, "I'm not going to comment on this question, whether it's right or wrong." Instead, Mr. Dixitt launched into his message of the evening, which was that if the Baltimore County School Board should decide to replace Towson and Delaney rather than renovate them, the financial impacts would be dire, sort of a financial Armageddon. According to Mr. Dixitt, the county would be severely penalized by the IAC and would lose $210 million to $220 million in state funding for the county's school capital program, making it impossible for the county to build Sparrow's Point, a Northeast school, and numerous other essential schools. In his words, "There's a loss of $220 million or $210 million from our capital program." This was presented by Mr. Dixitt as a flak prediction of what will happen if the school board should opt for replacement schools. Watching Mr. Dixitt on the video feed, I was quite perplexed. After all, the school system is moving ahead on a replacement school for Lansdowne High School, and no such dire warnings were voiced about that replacement school. Further, over the past 10 years, the county has built replacement high schools at both Carver and Dundalk. The IAC did not lower the boom or penalize the county in those cases. And I'm sure you're aware that the county has built numerous replacement elementary schools in the past decade, all without being penalized by the IAC. So I searched COMAR, the Code of Maryland Regulations, and discovered that the regulation that Mr. Dixitt was referring to states that the IAC's power to penalize a county desiring to build a replacement school is totally discretionary. Nothing in the COMAR regulation mandates that replacement schools will suffer reduced funding or penalties. So I asked myself, "Has the IAC ever exercised this discretion?" So I called my friend, former State Senator Ed Case Meyer, who currently chairs the IAC. Senator Case Meyer told me that the IAC has never exercised its discretion to penalize a county for proposing to build a replacement school. Never. Meanwhile, Delegate Michelle Geithen reached out to former Maryland school superintendents, and she was told that the IAC had never, in anyone's memory, penalized counties purely for choosing replacement schools. Delegate Kathy Forbes exchanged emails with Robert Goral, who is the Executive Director of the IAC, and he once again confirmed that the IAC had never penalized a county for wanting to build a replacement school. Finally, last Thursday morning, Mr. Goral and I spoke on the phone for 20 minutes, and I posed to him this question: Quote, "Suppose Baltimore County were to apply for replacement schools for the 70-year-old, 70-plus-year-old Towson High School and the nearly 60-year-old Delaney High School, and the IAC should deviate from its past practice of never opposing such decisions and should instead decide that it would penalize Baltimore County if it were to replace Towson and Delaney? Would the IAC give the Baltimore County School Board the chance to go back and with a full understanding of the lay of the land decide instead to renovate Towson and Delaney rather than replace them?" Mr. Goral replied, "Without hesitation, of course." He added, "Ultimately, the decision to replace the school is the county's decision, not the IAC's decision." So now that I've set the record straight on these matters, Dr. Hager, permit me to answer your question. My calculations were indeed correct. Based upon the newly updated feasibility studies that I received just this afternoon, the aggregate cost of the renovation options for Towson and Delaney combined is $268 million, while the aggregate cost of the replacement options for Towson and Delaney combined is $294 million, just $26 million more. If the 15-year MyIPass plan were extended to 16 years, an additional $140 million would be available for school construction, easily enough to dedicate the extra $26 million to build replacement schools for Towson and Delaney, and still have an additional $114 million left over to spend on other schools. This is the win-win result of which I spoke a month ago. It would avoid all of the unpleasantness and controversy that would surely ensue and would result in consensus rather than acrimony. We could all move forward together. I thank you for your attention and your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome, Delegate Forbes.
Good evening, Dr. Williams, Board Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, and members of the Board. I'm Kathy Forbes, Delegate of the Maryland General Assembly, representing District 42A. I'm grateful for your service on this Board and for the opportunity to once again address you this evening. I'm here tonight to ask you to designate Towson and Delaney High Schools as replacement schools on the CIP request, as they have been for the past two years. I know this is a big decision, so I think it's important that we're all dealing with the same facts. And fact number one is that state funding is not in jeopardy. Contrary to the information presented to you at your August 24th meeting, the IAC will not withhold funds if we do something other than what a feasibility study recommends. And they have never penalized a jurisdiction for choosing to build a replacement school. I shared this with you in writing, and it's been confirmed by Senator West, who also spoke with the IAC. What's more, the IAC does not require you to follow the recommendations of a feasibility study. Counties get to decide what they want to build, and school boards get to set these priorities. The state, through the IAC, is here to support local jurisdictions in the construction of safe, healthy school environments. The information shared with you mischaracterized the work of the IAC. As we are all stewards of taxpayer dollars, there are guidelines, but they are not draconian. Second, I need to point out that a feasibility study tells us what is feasible. It does not tell us what will be funded by the county, and that's a huge distinction. The GWOW feasibility study for Towson High recommends Option 1 at a cost of $131 million. This option is a renovation in addition that adds nearly 500 seats to the state-rated capacity but does not increase the common areas. The $131 million renovation, estimated to take more than four and a half years, does not increase the size of the gymnasium or the auditorium. At the end of construction, Towson High would continue to have the second-smallest gymnasium of any high school in Baltimore County, as it was built in 1949. Option 2 in that feasibility study, the renovation in addition that wasn't chosen, increases the size of the gymnasium and the auditorium, the food service areas, and student commons, but it also comes with a price tag of $143 million, more expensive than Option 3, the replacement school. But to be clear, if you leave the CIP as presented, with Towson and Delaney downgraded from a replacement school to a renovation, you are not ensuring that they will get what is feasible. The reality is Baltimore County has never spent more than $51 million on a high school renovation, and that was in the renovations of Pikesville and Hereford High Schools. Both schools were newer and smaller in size than Towson and Delaney. So it should be noted that the vote you take tonight will not be weighing two fairly equal options. You are deciding whether to build replacement schools or just partial inadequate renovations. What the feasibility study showed us is that any renovation will require replacement school dollars, but what history shows us is that the county won't spend nearly so much on renovations. When you reviewed the Delaney feasibility study, it recommended a renovation option that has an estimated cost of $134 million. This proves that the Delaney community was right to reject the $36 million renovation that was offered to them a few years ago. The scope and funding was woefully inadequate to meet the needs of their students. Another point that needs correction from your last meeting: You were told that Towson High must be preserved because it is on the Maryland State Historical Registry. That information is not correct. Towson High was given landmark status by the Baltimore County Landmarks Preservation Commission, and Baltimore County has a more flexible approach to landmarking. They are now able to landmark individual elements of a building that are historically important as opposed to an entire structure. So the good news is, BCPS can ask the Baltimore County Landmark Preservation Commission to review our status and revise our designation, and based on conversations I've had with members of the commission, the Towson preservation designation will not be a hurdle. Finally, I want to speak specifically about my concerns with MyIPass. While it is admirable to want all schools to be touched in the next 15 years, many buildings need more comprehensive work now, and some of our buildings are new. Buildings recently, buildings built recently will not qualify for state matching dollars, which means you give up the opportunity to double your county investment. Let me be clear: When this Board voted to build a new Lansdowne High School, I stood and cheered, and when the Board voted to fund a replacement school at Dundalk Elementary School, I stood and cheered. I wasn't over here saying they were taking money that should go to schools in my neighborhood or my district. I cheered when they cut the ribbons at Relay Elementary, Lansdowne, Mays Chapel, Lions Mill, and Colgate Elementary Schools, and I cheered the summer when they broke ground at the new Northeast Elementary and Middle Schools, and I'll be there cheering when they cut the ribbons at Red House Run, Summit Park, and Bedford. But now it's Towson and Delaney's time. They have waited their turn, and they have been in line. They have been on the five-year capital plan Baltimore County Public Schools has submitted to the state for the last two years. In fact, it got so far that the county executive held a press conference to announce his intention to replace these schools and committed initial planning dollars. He said the schools were in dire need of replacement, and he even suggested that a groundbreaking could happen in 2023. Nobody jumped the line. So I leave you tonight with a question. Towson High was 417 students over capacity last year, and this fall, we welcomed a freshman class that is more than 90 students, students bigger than the class that graduated last spring. It is by far the most overcrowded high school in the county. Exactly how long do you think a 72-year-old school is supposed to wait? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Delegate Sheila Ruth. Welcome, Delegate Ruth.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Williams, members of the Board, I'm Delegate Sheila Ruth, and I represent District 44B. I'm here to testify in support of the MyIPass recommendations. Put simply, the MyIPass recommendations are the most fair, most equitable plan for BCPS schools. After an extensive data-driven process that included facilities assessment, cost estimates, financial analysis, enrollment projections, and community engagement, including three surveys, 12 hours of community forums, and 25,000 stakeholders engaged, Cannon Design developed a plan that will ensure every school in the county will have improvements within 15 years within budget. Every school will be at no more than 100% capacity utilization by 2026. It doesn't get any more fair than that. If the premium projects are included, 86 schools will be deferred beyond 15 years, including 13 schools that serve my district. How is that fair? 15 years means that an entire generation of students will not see a renovation during their K through 12 years. I have sympathy for the Towson and Delaney parents, who have long advocated for new high schools. If I were a Towson parent, I would do the same. Towson and Delaney have issues, but the schools in my district and every district have needs too. Members of the Board, will you tell the parents of Catonsville Elementary School, Chadwick Elementary School, Dogwood Elementary School, Edmondson Heights Elementary School, Westchester Elementary School, Westtown Elementary School, Woodmore Elementary School, Arbutus Middle School, Windsor Mill Middle School, Woodlawn Middle School... School, Arbutus Middle School, Windsor Mill Middle School, Woodlawn Middle School, Milford Middle Academy, Western School of Technology and Environmental Science, Woodlawn High School, and the 73 other deferred schools that their students are less important than the students at the premium project schools? Countywide stakeholders overwhelmingly voted for equity in the surveys. 91% of respondents agree or strongly agree that funding for facilities should be allocated to benefit as many students as possible. 82% felt that the longest students should go without a major renovation is 15 years. Presented with the options and information, there was broad support from countywide stakeholders for the option that enables more equitable distribution. Members of the board, I ask you, please do the right thing and vote for the plan which will ensure all students have a fair opportunity for a good environment conducive to their educational needs. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kimberly Shiloh for Delegate Benjamin Brooks. Welcome, Michelle.
Good evening, Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, and members of the school board. My name, for the record, is Kimberly Shiloh, and I am here representing Delegate Benjamin Brooks of the 10th Legislative District. I'm here to provide his written testimony in support of the multi-year plan for all schools, MyIPass, developed by Cannon Design. Last year, Baltimore County Government and Baltimore County Board of Education supported an independent consultant to evaluate the conditions and needs of all Baltimore County public schools. The idea was to have a multi-year plan that would prioritize the needs and provide a roadmap to school construction, renovation, and repair of all Baltimore County public schools. This process, known as MyIPass, develops a long-range, 15-year for identifying and equitably prioritizing capital improvements to all schools. This process would bring a sense of stability, order, predictability, fiscal accountability, and equity to a very complicated but critically necessary process for the repair, renovation, and sustainability to all schools in Baltimore County without pitting one community against another. In preparation of MyIPass, Cannon Consultants, a leader in the industry, for the past two years, conducted numerous meetings, site visits, and outreach efforts to produce a comprehensive capital plan for all schools in Baltimore County. According to some of the results from the previous BCPS MyIPass survey, 91% of respondents agree that facilities should be allocated to benefit as many students as possible. This survey also stated that 48,000 community survey responses confirm broad support for recommended facility options that enable more equitable distribution of capital investments, and 82% of respondents preferred 15 years or less as the longest that students should be without major building renovation. MyIPass made recommendations to address the overall needs of Baltimore County public schools as a whole. They include the renovation of Towson High School and Delaney School. Altering the MyIPass to replace said schools in lieu of renovation will prioritize them over nearly 86 other schools throughout the county. This diserves the students of those other schools. If altered, funding will be unavailable to address the needs of the remaining schools for the next 15 years. Taking away the opportunity to address these concerns over this time span to replace two buildings places undue hardship on the students, administrators, and educators of those 86 schools. Funding for facilities should be allocated to benefit as many students as possible. The students of Baltimore County, regardless of zip code, deserve the opportunity to flourish in buildings that are properly constructed, insulated, and ventilated. Following the recommendations of MyIPass secures this opportunity. For these reasons, I ask the board to support the recommendations.
Thank you. So now I call on our stakeholder group leaders to speak, and our first stakeholder is Mr. Bash from.
Good evening. You heard Mr. Dixit's excellent presentation in the last Board of Education. Mr. Dixit told us that we need to maximize state dollars. Mr. Dixit has done a great job. But the Board of Education's job is not just about money. You know that the county executive does not have all the money, neither the state. You also know that Delaney High and Towson High are very old, have so many problems, you already know. The score of those buildings is one of the lowest. They are in the central area. The central area is the seat of the county. That has to mean something. Old school buildings are like old patients in nursing homes. You fix the heart, the lungs will fail. You fix the lungs, the kidneys will go down, and you know what happens next. In 2017, this Board of Education promised to replace Delaney and Towson, promised to replace them. The Board of Education is not just about money. You are an independent board. So the decision to replace these two schools is really your word, and you have a choice. You could keep your word and teach the students to keep their words, or you could just simply change and not replace those two high schools. I ask you to keep your words and build two brand-new schools in Towson and Delaney. The Central Area Presentation will be on September 22nd. You are all invited. It's about retention and recruitment of teachers. If anyone wants to attend on Zoom, please send me a line on centralarea@gmail.com. Our council also asks you to implement the G7 languages, plus Chinese, plus Arabic, Farsi, and Urdu. It is better business and better understanding of different cultures. I thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Billy Burp.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Williams, Chair Mrs. Scott, Vice Chair Mrs. Hen, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I would like to begin by thanking the superintendent and his staff for working to include CASE and its members as decisions are made and implemented. I am hopeful that we will continue to collaborate and that CASE remains a voice at the table. Those closest to implementation have much to offer to ensure buy-in and success. I am compelled tonight to talk to you about the emotional needs of CASE members. I held a meeting on September 3rd with my members, and during the meeting, one member described herself as being broken. As the member told her story, dozens of members put in the chat feature that they felt the same way. You see, it's hard to run a school, even in the best of circumstances. Add to the regular list of responsibilities not enough staff, not enough buses, late hours, tracking vaccinations and testing, and ensuring learning when students and staff are exposed or sick make the job of teaching and learning exponentially harder. Administrators and teachers are thought of as heroes as schools reopen, and believe me, they are heroes. The community is demanding a sense of normalcy, and reopening does that. But the second a student or staff member is exposed or becomes sick, administrators and teachers become the villain in this story, and it becomes impossible to do your best work when the very people you are trying to serve are mad at you. Administrators and teachers don't make the decisions they are being held accountable for. They don't create the communications, they don't decide the protocols, yet being a frontline employee, they take the blame. They take the blame. Administrators and central office staff are used to working more than 40 hours a week, but now I hear stories daily of staff working from early in the morning until late at night and weekends for weeks on end. Working to exhaustion is not a badge of honor or loyalty. Overworking is a trauma response. We need to recognize it and do something about it. Staff are not seeing the light at the end of the tunnel and are beginning to resign. It breaks my heart to hear someone describe themselves as broken. For what it's worth, I see you, I hear you, and I will tell your story. You are not broken. You are not alone. Thank you.
All right. Next is Ms. Cindy Sexton.
Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. There are many memes on social media relating to the beginning of school year tired for educators, and it is an exhausting time, a fun, exciting time, but yet exhausting. Lots of wonderful things are happening with our students. Educators are sharing positive stories of lessons, relationships, and more. Our students are wearing their masks and following the lead of the adults in adhering to the mitigation strategies. I respect every speaker here tonight advocating for our school buildings, but I'm here for the people who are the boots on the ground in the schoolhouse, be it virtual or physical, with our students every single day. Because COVID, the challenges and changes continue, and I must speak about the workload for our educators. All educators are feeling overwhelmed at this time, but I want to take a moment to specifically speak about our nurses. We love our nurses, but we will start losing them due to their untenable job requirements. It's always been a challenge being a school nurse. At the elementary school where I worked, there were over 700 students and one nurse, and that was before COVID. To say that COVID has intensified their work is an understatement. We must do something to help our nurses. TABCA will be meeting with them next week to hear concerns, solutions, and do all we can to keep them in our schools. We know there is a labor shortage nationwide, and the educator shortage is real and extremely concerning. Some elementary educators in the virtual learning program, elementary educators have more than 60 students in their classes, and secondary classes are even higher. Because there's also a substitute shortage, classes in the physical schoolhouse are being combined. This compounds concern over close contact and contact tracing, not to mention the academic concerns of trying to teach that many students. We all want what is best for our students. It's why we are here. We know the system is working to hire educators. We must look at what is needed to attract and retain employees, and I know that part of that is to look at the morale and the climate of the system, which leads me to the efficiency review, and I'm eager to hear the report about that tonight, but I'm even more eager to work with the system so we can collaboratively address the core concerns, the causes, and develop solutions. Because when this happens, the morale and the climate will improve, and that will benefit our students, because our kids can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. David Basler.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, Superintendent Williams, Chairperson Scott, Vice Chair Hen. I'm David C. Baz, our Executive Board Member for Ask Me Local 434. I've been asked to speak to you on behalf of our unions, union employees, essential workers of Baltimore County Public Schools. You will receive a document this evening addressing the finding and recommendations from an efficiency study. Only having three minutes, I will not steal all its thunder here, addressing its details. I will say, though, after a glance, it should be nice to say, "I told you so." But due to the gravity of its findings, there is no joke in thinking it could have been better for our students if you, your predecessors, or our current management had different priorities. As we move forward, know the union leadership has sought to solve many of the issues the study found repeatedly, only to be rebuffed by the other side of the table. We have invested much of our own time off the clock to examine, help, and be available for our fellow employees and union members' issues. But as essential employees, still, we stand ready to join, to navigate the changes necessary to better the service to our Baltimore County students and staff. Of what I've stated before, I will reiterate now. We have employee positions that currently underfunded compared to the surrounding jurisdictions and even our partners in Baltimore County Government by $2 or $3 an hour. We need a regional salary study to compare accurately, to effectively resolve this issue, and overcome our current employee shortages. The savings realized if you implement the suggested resolutions should fund these increases. Also, as I said last time, contractors doing the work of our Ask Me represented employees is not cost-effective. We, the Ask Me represented employees of Baltimore County Public Schools, look forward as stakeholders to work with you and resolve these longstanding issues. I thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Julie Zylinski.
Good evening, Chairperson Scott, Vice Chairwoman Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the Board of Education. My name is Julie Zylinski, and I am currently the co-chair of the Special Education Citizens' Advisory Committee, or CECAC, and the parent of a Baltimore County Public School high school student. Now, on Friday, our group alerted the Board of specific special education staff and concerns by email, and today I would like to highlight a few key points. As you know, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, requires that transition services be included in a student's IEP during middle and high school so that each student is adequately prepared to transition to life activities after completing their time here at BCPS. CECAC has long advocated for additional transition facilitators to support a historically understaffed department, evidenced by large caseloads, with each facilitator responsible for hundreds of students. We are aware, of course, that there are currently many job openings in the Department of Special Education, as we've already heard this evening about staffing issues, and we understand that applications for the VLP have been accepted long after initial deadlines, with changing enrollment affecting staffing needs. However, we were alarmed when most of the transition facilitators needed to support IDEA were recently reassigned to new positions as case managers for the VLP in order to offset staffing shortages. The gutting of an already understaffed area to meet a current need is concerning. As advocates for students with IEPs, we do feel the need to stress two key points. First, the few transition facilitators that remain in their positions now have impossible caseloads of well over 1,000 students. caseloads of well over 1,000 students each, which no amount of expertise can overcome. Under these circumstances, how will transition services required by IDEA be implemented? Secondly, valuable staff resources are wasted as experienced transition facilitators are moved to jobs where they have far less recent experience. As new case managers, now they have to create new relationships, and they also have to go back and get professional development to provide the tools they need to do this job. This upheaval is occurring for what is supposed to be a temporary situation, but overwhelming already-stressed staff members does no one any good. We remain deeply concerned about what appears to be desperate times requiring desperate measures, but we're unclear about how the needs of our students will be met under these conditions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that concludes it for our stakeholder group. Next is general public comment, and we have first, Mr. Mohamed Jamil.
Good evening. Peace and blessings to Madam Chair Scott, Dr. Williams, members of the Board, and everyone present here. I intended to devote my three minutes to commend you and offer my compliments for diligence and hard work without getting any revisions. However, a few days after Labor Day, I received a disturbing out-of-state call about our 15-years-old grandson. He was very upset and angry with one of his teachers and used the word "hate" because the teacher was talking about the upcoming 9/11 anniversary and disparaging Muslims of the world as uncivilized, violent, and terrorists. Obviously, he was infusing his own ignorance, bias, and hate into the minds of children who were born after 9/11. This became a red flag for me. I started wondering about the level of education of our teachers here and what they might be teaching in history and social studies classrooms, or discussing current affairs. Majority of the current generation of teachers, let alone the public at large, knows about Muslims only from 7/11 or 9/11. They were influenced by the media, self-promoting politicians, and subtleties in Hollywood movies. Do these teachers know that Afghanistan has unexploited reserves of many metals? Uranium, gold, chromium, oil, gas, emeralds, garnets, rubies, marble? They have the second-largest reserve of the earth metals that are essential for iPhones, iPads, computers, electronic devices, rockets, space shuttles, et cetera. Our Defense Department warned in 2010 that Afghanistan will be the future Saudi Arabia of energy because of its large reserves of lithium, and that the Russians and Chinese must not have access to it. Do they know that almost every Afghan leader was either our man or Russian puppet since 1973 and was removed or assassinated by the competing intelligence agencies? Do they know that we trained and armed the students, which is Taliban in the Arabic language, to force out the Russians, and they shed their blood? Do they know that we abandoned them and broke the promise to help them after the Russians were out? They felt betrayed and used, which created the hate. Hate is like a poison tree that bears poisonous fruit. It leads to violence, which leads to act of terrorism. Look at the 92 chapters of KKK, Army of God, White Supremist, and many others, who are instrumental in spreading hate and committing nearly 70% of all domestic terrorism, according to Southern Power Law Center and the FBI. I hope Dr. Williams--
--is our teachers and trained and qualified--
Thank you.
--children of today are leaders--
That's time, Mr. Jamil. Thank you.
--and they should not learn hate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Sharon Saraf.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Williams, member of the Board. I have a list. Let's see how far I get. If special education is a service, not a place, how is it legal to prevent students with disabilities receiving services outside general education to be prevented from attending the virtual learning program? These students should be able to receive their services at least in the least restrictive environment, whether the environment is virtual or in person. Home and hospital was not set up to pick up the slack. There aren't enough tutors, and the program does not address everyone's needs. Students cannot access home and hospital without a valid medical or mental health referral. I know it's hard to believe, but some students actually learn better in the virtual environment. A lack of willingness to address or accommodate their needs is a violation of FAP and civil rights. The benefits of virtual learning impact other programs. They reduce overcrowding in school buildings and buses. They allow students to improve their communication skills. We allow dressing weather-related days off, create collaboration between schools. Parents are allowed to attend IEP meetings during their lunch break without having to worry about taking time off. And yes, it allows students in quarantine to access their instruction. Wait a minute, that's not happening. I realize that not all students can learn in the virtual environment, but not all students will learn in person either. Two, teachers, support staff, and bus drivers are people. They are not superhumans. They have feelings, fears, and rights. They should not be treated the way we would not like to be treated. This is why we have a teacher shortage. Expecting teachers to teach in person and online at the same time neglect their health and safety, and that of their family, is not acceptable. We did that last year to address the pandemic, and it didn't work. Neither is it working to sweep this pandemic under the rug and go back to what was before. It didn't work then, it's--
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Andrew Cool.
Good evening. You guys know who I am, but I don't know who you are. You never respond to anything I say. I've come here to speak on behalf of all the children in BCPS, but most importantly, mine. Olivia, it says right here, refused from school for not wearing a mask, which is a medical choice. Why was she refused? Not only was it a medical choice, she wasn't allowed to be. She was met with opposition. Three police officers at an elementary school front entrance, Principal Hoffmaster and Department of School Safety Manager, Dr. Safran, that morning, when I found the principal introduced ourselves out front. After my introduction, the principal said, quote, "Ah, we knew you might be coming," end quote. Of course, I would be here. My daughter's a registered student. Immediately, it all made sense. I never-- I'm sorry. I've never seen police officers outside of our elementary school entrance before. I felt intimidated. Three police officers, manager, principal, they were all there to prevent the entrance of my daughter. Why? Is my child a hazard? Is my child dangerous? All for simply not consenting to your medical mandate? That is discrimination. The FDA deemed a mask a medical device pursuant to FDA Section 201, Section 8, definition number two, and as such, the use of face masks is regulated in every state. Enforcing someone to wear a medical device against consent, that's practicing medicine, isn't it, without a license? And a violation of international law and other laws, and simply immoral. I asked the principal and the manager if they were my child's medical doctor, if the nurse was, the Board of Education, FDA, CDC, Johnny O., Dr. Williams, or Maryland Department of Health, and so on and so forth. The reply was no. I said, "Then how can you mandate medical treatment? Have you obtained consent from your patient? Do you know my daughter? Have you ever examined her? Do you know any medical condition she may or may not have? Have you disclosed the side effects or negative consequences for this little girl wearing a mask over her mouth and nose for eight hours?" That includes oxygen deprivation, increased carbon dioxide inhalation, bacterial accumulation, impaired brain function as a result, and psychological and mental effects. Who's going to be liable for anything that may occur? The CDC you cling to for their recommendations? Someone will have to be liable. Everyone who's administered during this medical treatment enforcing this mandate is complicit and liable for all damages. If you do not fight on the side for this little girl-- and her peers-- and the rights of all students, then you are against them.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Yara Sheikh.
I would appreciate if I get an answer from somebody sometime.
My name is Yara Sheikh, and I'm the PTSA president of Delaney High School. Advocacy for a comprehensive solution for Delaney High School started in 2014 when parents accustomed to leaky pipes and aged infrastructure became particularly alarmed when, on a Saturday, a steam pipe burst in a music classroom, and steaming hot water melted the filing cabinets and sprayed across the classroom. What if a child had been in the room? Days later, the adjacent music room flooded, destroying thousands of dollars of instruments and music. The auditorium has flooded three times, destroying the orchestra pit and flooring. When the 1964 furnace broke one morning, it was 22 degrees outside. It's still there. Every window on the first floor is plexiglass. Once, when a classroom was flooding, the custodian tried to turn the water off, and the knob disintegrated in his hand. Pipes burst weekly. We still don't have central air. We have units, but our hallway is registered 86 degrees today. We have the largest deficit of space of any school in the county, 47,000 square feet. It was documented in last year's IAC application for a new school. My son was playing soccer on one of only two usable fields on 43 acres. When it became an electric field, an electric currents rode up the metal fencing. Both fields are in violation of ADA access, also documented in the 2016 feasibility study. And despite having 1,300 student athletes, we don't have a turf field. The 1999 addition is literally coming apart at the walls in the satellite cafeteria, a room so-called because the students are allowed to eat there, but there is no food service. Our cafeteria with four lunch shifts is too small and would be in fire code violation without the satellite cafeteria. The settlement issues are cited in the 2016 feasibility study. And yesterday, our auditorium was on fire when stage lighting set our 1964 original curtains on fire. Facts have truly been stranger than fiction. We love our community. We are one of the most diverse schools in Baltimore County. Over 48% of our population are students of color. Last year, 26% of our students qualified for free and reduced meals, an increase of 9% from the year before. As the daughter of immigrants and the first Arab-American PTA and PTSA president serving in Baltimore County, Delaney is a beacon of what our future looks like. Beautiful students from all walks of life. Every one of our students is deserving of a new school, just like students across this county. The case for a new school has been made. The costs of a renovation are abhorrent, and we may never see them. Spending far too many dollars, bringing a decrepit old building up to 21st century standards, and impeding instruction in the construction process. I've visited almost every school in the county with my work as an emergency food distribution coordinator for the Student Support Network and on the League of Women Voters Education Committee. I know there are needs everywhere. Tonight, set the precedent of how we move forward for every child in the county.
Thank you. That's time, Ms. Sheikh. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Diana Bergman.
Hi, Board members. I am so happy to see everybody in person, even though we all look like ninjas is okay. But I want to take you back to 2014. I want to share with you how naive I was. As I advocated for Lansdowne High School, I once thought that this sign was going to get me a new school. And as you see, we're still waiting. So, along with me, coming to every board meeting, this is not the only place I was actually participating and doing observation. I ran throughout Annapolis chasing after everybody, from Governor Larry Hogan, the Comptroller, our Madam Speaker, our Senator President, Bill Ferguson. I mean, I chased all these delegates in their own jurisdiction. They weren't even representing Baltimore County. But I also did miss what used to be called the Interagency Committee. And about three years ago, that Interagency Committee was stripped of its structure. And it was turned into the Interagency Commission, okay? They can't really say what an LEA should do or what the governor should do. They're just there to look at construction projects. So, I know that the Senator spoke, and he is in his first term, so maybe he didn't know that there was a structural change to the IAC. And the delegate, Ms. Voorhees, also first term. But that agency fits a purpose. They're just looking at construction plans to make sure that what's put on the table from each side that has to pay has the money. And they used the word, what was it? If anybody was penalized, if any LEA has ever been penalized. Well, not exactly penalized, but there was unintended consequences. Baltimore City had to return money back for their school construction projects because they did not complete those projects in time. Howard County also got, you know, unintended consequences where they had to pay two superintendents because of what happened with their mold in their construction projects. Even Baltimore County had to deal with consequences when we were funding, forefunding projects, forefunding projects, and taking money from our county employees and retirees and their benefits. So, I'm telling you right now, I'm in full 100% support in my pass. We asked for that. We want to make sure that every single child was going to get their needs met. And if we don't approve this, you know what's going to end up happening? Because we're not leaving anybody out. Towson and Delaney are included in the my pass recommendation, okay? They are also included in that--
That's time. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Logan Tau.
Good evening, Chairperson Scott, Vice Chair Hen, and Dr. Williams. My name is Logan Tau, and I'm currently-- My name is Logan Tau, and I'm currently a junior at Delaney High School, as well as a member of the Central Area Education Advisory Council. Today, I want to bring to your attention the importance of changing STEM more into STEAM and how we can use retired teachers and professionals within our education system to improve opportunities for students. While in the past years, our school system has implemented very strong STEM curriculums that prepare students well for higher education, I feel that many students, including me, are a bit lost in deciding how we want to continue our futures. That's why I propose that we can invite professionals, either retired or active, into showing students what it's like to be in the job force. For example, in my elementary school and middle school, our schools hosted job fairs, which allowed professionals to come in and talk about what they do. I found this, looking back now as a high schooler, very intriguing, and it allowed me to see how jobs operated and how people work together as a team. And this brings me to how we can use retired teachers. Teachers have experience working with kids and watching them grow up and succeed. And I feel that, looking back at their teacher experiences and knowing the students and how the pitfalls they may have made is really helpful and can be used to help future students in their success. And along with taking professionals, I feel that changing STEM into more of a STEAM environment can be used just with culture. By providing more cultural education, we can teach people to respect each other and it is to be able to work together as a whole world. Globalization has brought many countries together, and it's becoming increasingly vital for students to learn how to work together. As you can see in this picture, China, Chinese manufactured cranes are being brought into the port of Baltimore to expand the port's capabilities and capacity. This shows that how culture interactions can influence people differently and how important it is for different countries to work together. That's why I'm proposing for you to take note and think about providing BCPS with more foreign language opportunities, as well as introducing more professionals into the education system to help students learn more about their futures and how to interact with others. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Darren Badillo.
My name is Darren Badillo, and I'm here as a concerned father of two students who attend BCPS. Also, I'm a member of the Baltimore County Parent and Student Coalition. We can sit here and have a deep conversation and discussion about many issues, but I can only give a high-level overview of some of the issues within three minutes. School buses are overflowed, overcrowded right now, and some students are standing in the aisles and sitting on the floor in the middle aisle, bumping into each other. Is this setting up our students for a successful, positive day? Not getting to school on time, I hear, and coming home after 5:30 some days, many parents are frustrated. I got a phone call the other day from my children's school saying that they cannot get on the bus home because there was no room. And I hear this happening to other families throughout the county. Who is responsible for the planning or not planning when it comes to transportation? Getting our kids to school on time should be a top priority in Baltimore County. We give each school over $15,000 per student per year. Over 50% of our tax dollars go towards education here in Baltimore County. School violence is up over 50% in Baltimore County the last few years, and it's only getting worse. We saw the shooting at Towson University. We see school fights posted on social media, and we're only two weeks into the school year. We need to have zero tolerance in our schools, support our teachers, and provide the proper resources for all the children's families in Baltimore County. Dr. Williams, what are you going to do about this, these issues? When you were elected, you mentioned on your first day, "I will make myself available. I will make my cabinet members available." It's important for me to tell the truth, and I agree with you. That was over two and a half years ago, and we're still waiting. Why won't you communicate with the public and inform us what's going on and what your plans are? Maybe because you really don't care or you don't have a plan? And I think it's a little bit of both. We pass failing students here in Baltimore County. We no longer count homework as grades. We tell them to shoot for the stars, dream big, sky's the limit, but how is that possible if they can't even get through the necessary fundamentals because they lack education? The United States used to be at the top of education, and now we're slipping and falling fast towards the bottom. While other countries are focused on reading and math, we're focused on being woke. We all need to wake up because we're falling behind. And with all respect, CRT has no place in Baltimore County schools. After a traumatic event with global pandemic, now's the time you want to change our children's education? We have bigger problems in our schools, and you want us to focus our time and energy on teaching children that white people have, white people have white privilege? Teaching them they have less opportunities because of the color of their skin? That's not a fact, but a feeling, and has no place in Baltimore County.
That's time. Next, we have Nicola Appoluso.
My name is, so good evening, everybody. Well, first, Dr. Williams, great to meet you finally, and everybody, the member of the board. I'm a professor of Romance Languages and Literature. I teach at Loyola University, Maryland. Also teach at Morgan State University, where we founded since 2018, the only Italian language program currently taught in an historical black college and university across the United States. So, I'm here today on the behalf of many parents in the county, really seek to expand our current language offering. I've been involved also as an advisory council and the Baltimore County Board of Education. And since 2007, I created this school from the community concern of our very limited language offering. We have a very diverse community here in the county, but our current language offering, they do not really reflect our diversity here in the county. Now, in 2019, I founded a STEAM after-school program in Italian through the Department of Baltimore County Recreation and Parks, and is held at Miss Chapel Elementary. As you can see from here, next month, we are starting again. It's a STEAM program to teach Italian to children from all over the county. And this is hosted in Miss Chapel Elementary, but has children from Pikeville, where we have Pinewood, we have Pedonia, we have all middle school in the area, a lot of children, but I'm only one, and the classroom can only fit 20 kids. So, really, we need your help here because also Delaney High School, Towson High School parents directly reach out to me to offer their children more Italian classes. We currently offer only Spanish and French, and sometimes occasionally Latin in one or two schools. If you look at PJ County, they teach STEAM language courses in Chinese. So, we have a lot of catch-up to do here in the county and also in other places in Maryland, but especially here in the Baltimore County areas, public system. So, I'm here to really please urge you to consider not only expanding for Italian, but other languages, as previous speakers mentioned, Chinese or others. In our school, the parents not only are concerned about this, but the children are as well. We are shortchanging our children because also 20 years ago, we did much better. Before September 11, children from all public schools used to be able to go abroad, study abroad, do language exchanges. Since 2001, that stopped. And that's another thing, also, many concerned parents came to us as well. So, I'm here also to urge you to explore new opportunities for our students to travel. We have money from the council for hiring a teacher and that pay the salary. And I know with the pandemic, you're thinking traveling may be another, but it's been 20 years now that our kids in the county cannot go abroad and study or live in different situations. So, thank you again for considering this to expand our language offering.
Thank you. Next is John Merson.
So, hey, good evening to the board, Dr. Williams, to others in attendance. My name is John Merson. I'm local here, got a background in emergency management and operational risk. I've had some correspondence with some folks in BCPS in the past about this. I kind of want to talk to you about two different things. One is an operational assessment, I believe it was called the Baltimore County Public Schools Operational Efficiency Review Report. And as a person who's done operational audits, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it's not a true audit. This was essentially a climate survey on the way folks feel about the way operations are going. So, I hope that you take those results with a grain of salt because they are not numerically based. There was no process mapping done, if you're familiar with those type of operational assessments. They did have some limited value coming out of it, one of which was something that I've been talking to the schools about for the past year, which involves risk. So, operational risk is something that, you know, allows you to present some predictability in your processes. It's sort of the heartbeat of your organization. Something that you guys do all the time is like a snow day, right? So, I think that that's where everybody would like to get, given the current number of hazards and things that the school board, school systems, you know, involved with. You know, you want to get better at these things, and I think that you've made some steps in that direction. One of these I want to tell you about risk is it's a leadership responsibility. It cannot be divorced from the leader, Dr. Williams. So, you can't delegate it to the risk manager as this operational assessment is asking for, and you can't contract out for it through an MOU with like a teachers' union. You know, it's your responsibility and yours alone. The history of the risk and where we're at now, like I said, there's some steps in the right direction, but there's still work to do. In September of 2020, I started contacting the school system about this. I really didn't have the vocabulary to describe risk at the appropriate level. They had some things like stakeholders as far as a union as an input to risk, which is just fundamentally incorrect. Recently, the superintendent said that he was going to defer and align with the county regarding in-person learning. You know, if the county is going to go with, you know, reducing the amount of people who are allowed inside, then it would follow in suit, right? And I think that's a step in the right direction to align with one of the executive branches. However, when I did look at the response and shifting metrics, which is a product that's on your website, you know, it did show that there was an intermediate step in between these risk conditions and your operating conditions, which was called consult with medical experts. It just shows me that we're still in a place where we have a lack of understanding or an unwillingness to adapt a defendable risk process. So, I'm never going to show up anywhere without a recommendation. So, I recommend that you get an actual audit on your risk process to understand exactly how that's mapped out, who's having input on it, and ensure.
That's time. Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Amy Adams.
Good evening to everyone on the board. There are many topics that I would like to speak to you all about tonight. Current quarantining practices, the lack of instructional education for kids out on quarantine, the decision to cancel homecoming events, the audit that will be discussed later tonight, but I'm going to focus on my pass. I first had questions last December when Mr. Dixit presented my pass to the board. He stated that Delaney High School was in Group Four for improvements with 14 other schools. Also in this group was Carver High School, which was built from the ground up in 2012, just nine years ago. How is it that a school in need of replacement for at least five years, and that's being generous, a school that was a campaign promise for our current county executive, has now been downgraded and is still up for debate? My interest in this led me to volunteer for over 15 hours on the Stakeholder Advisory Committee Phase Two this winter with county representatives and the Cannon Design Team. I wanted to understand the rankings of schools, how options for improvements were debated. I learned a lot. I listened to representatives from all around Baltimore County discuss the particular needs of their school communities. No one was asking for anything extraordinary, and no one was asking to take from one community to give to another. I think it's intellectually dishonest and disappointing and dangerous that the message from Mr. Dixit's my pass presentations and the comments from board members are pitting communities against each other. I found it curious that the report and info that board members were given prior to last meeting contained significant errors acknowledged by Mr. Dixit. I hope that he has provided you with the corrected information. I also find it concerning that Mr. Dixit refused to address Senator West's proposed idea from the August 10 meeting when Dr. Hager brought it up to seek more information three weeks ago. I see that question was passed on to Cannon Design, and the answer was attached to board docs. It seems to me that Cannon Design is not listening to the stakeholders. They disagree with this idea, and they're not using any input to make adjustments to the plan. As an engaged parent with a child in a school that desperately needs facility improvements, if for nothing else, basic safety reasons, and a representative of a coalition of parents am having trouble understanding the change in the FY22 County Capitol Budget Request by Priority Order that was approved in January of this year compared to the one up for tonight's vote? I think the reason I'm having trouble understanding this change is because it's not based on data, but politics. The school system and the school board members are not politically affiliated. They are here to serve students and staff members in our schools. My sister-in-law works in Syracuse, New York. She's an architect that designs and builds schools. From planning to opening the doors to students, it takes six years. I heard that Lansdowne, which is now approved to be rebuilt, will be opened and completed in 2030. So, where does that leave Towson and Delaney? 2040, 2050? How is this fair to the generations of kids that have been neglected in these schools and will continue to be?
Thank you. So, that concludes our general comment. And next is, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report for that. I call on Dr. Williams.
Good evening, Board Scott, Chair. Board Chair Scott, did I just say that backwards? It's been a long day. Vice Chair Hen and members of the board. Tonight, I presented an update on our first two weeks of school. The team and I welcomed students to buildings on Monday, August 30. Since then, I had the opportunity to visit schools and see firsthand the continued excitement on the faces of our staff and students. However, rather than describe it to you, I thought I would show it to you. So, please take a look at the video compiled by our team at BCPSTV. If we can go to the video.
Smiling, everybody's smiling, right? Under the masks, we just can't tell? Yep, I see it. I can tell.
Hopefully, at this time, we have gotten to your classrooms, looked around the room, met your teacher, seen some familiar faces, and welcomed some new faces.
Just some general reminders. Communication is always key.
Oh, so what's happening when she's sharing, when she's talking about herself a little bit? What's going on? Ty?
I'm excited about like to meet my friends again, go back, see all the teachers, learn again in person, also to get adjusted again, to like go learn once again like it was. Yeah, pretty happy to come back.
Having our students back just gives us a newfound energy and motivation for really hearing the instruction to meet everyone's personal needs.
So, we're excited about learning. As we visited schools and visited classrooms, it was just great seeing our staff members interacting with our students. I had an opportunity to interact with our students. And so, we know this is a different type of normal in terms of what's going on with the pandemic, but we're excited to bring back so many of our students in Baltimore County Public Schools.
It's also a credit to our teachers because at a small school like this, they have to do two or three things to give all those opportunities to kids. And this school has just as much or more opportunities. just as much or more opportunities.
So again, that is something that is very important.
Coming back into the building from maybe six to seven months out, we wanted to re-engage them, let them know that they can trust us, let them know that we're here for them.
And now they're seniors, class of 2022.
So precision would be if I was to readjust and shift these lines around and put them in the right spot and observe.
Our message from the beginning, from the day that they walked in today to the moment when they leave this afternoon, that they have someone that cares about them and that we have systems in place to support them, so that if there's a question that they have, we will have the answer for them in order for them to be successful.
So once again, I would like to acknowledge BCPSTV for putting together the visual. Can we acknowledge the staff in BCPS? I would like to give some brief updates if we can go back to the PowerPoint. Aligned with our continued efforts to protect and preserve in-person learning, we have provided several recent updates related to health and safety. Last week, we communicated our practices and procedures related to quarantine and isolation of staff and students. As part of that communication, we detailed school-level efforts to ensure the continuity of learning during those times. This week, we launched our staff vaccination verification process. And today, in line with our universal masking mandate, the Maryland General Assembly Committee approved a universal masking mandate across all Maryland public schools. As always, we continue to support and encourage vaccination of all eligible persons who are medically able. Clinic information can be found on our website. Also on our website, our community can find the latest COVID-19 transmission information using the data dashboard. As of yesterday, Baltimore County is currently in the orange threshold for overall transmission with 94.27 cases per 100,006% positivity rate. As we continue to navigate these challenging times, the importance of positive school and family partnerships is critical. Upcoming messages will underscore ways our community can help support school efforts to stop the spread of COVID-19. Additionally, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize the work of our school nurses, our health assistants, and school staff who have been on the front lines with contact tracing. We have heard concerns from families regarding the number of students and the length of time around quarantine and isolation. In the interest of preserving, protecting in-person learning, we have reached out to our county executive to request support as we work together to increase our ability to respond to school and community needs. Go to the next slide, please. As communicated to BCPS families on August 27, BCPS is among other districts nationally facing a bus driver shortage. We have provided our county executive with specific information related to the driver shortage and know that he is working in collaboration with peers in other counties to help meet this critical need. Due to the diligent efforts of our Office of Transportation, all eligible students continue to receive transportation service. In order to provide service, some routes have been combined where rider capacities permit. And other routes pick up one group of students and then return to pick up a second group of students, resulting in later the normal arrivals and departures. In some cases, the Office of Transportation in schools will continue to communicate timely bus changes and delays to families on a regular basis. Families should contact schools directly with any transportation-related questions and concerns. The Office of Transportation will continue to adhere to mitigation and cleaning strategies as identified in the BCPS reopening plan. Next slide, please. The Office of Food and Nutrition Services has worked diligently to serve nutritious and appetizing meals to students in our schools as well as those enrolled in the virtual learning program. Breakfast and lunch are offered to all students attending BCPS at no cost for the entire year. In-person, students select a hot entree, fruit, vegetable, side dish, and milk. A yogurt box is also available as an alternative side item for any student. The virtual learning program, or VLP, students are provided five days of frozen meals for both breakfast and lunch with cooking instructions included in the box. Pre-ordered meals may be picked up at five locations within the district. Next slide. We are excited to see that the enrollment has steadily increased over the last month. As you can see, August 18, we had approximately 105,401 students. August 25, 106,647. August 30, 109,927. And September 7, 110,573. 3,192 students are enrolled in our virtual learning program. We continue to monitor enrollment requests and offer admissions as slots become available. Our official enrollment numbers will be finalized on September 30. Next slide, please. Overall, we had great attendance during the first week of school. Our overall average daily attendance rate for all schools and all grades was 93.57%. As you can see from the data on this slide, all grade levels were above 90% and close to or exceeding the 94% attendance standard. Next slide. As a reminder, our four key areas for this year are social-emotional wellness for staff and students, accelerating learning for student progress, increasing data literacy to support our efforts, and collectively committing to a standard of excellence. We will provide professional learning and support to Team BCPS to ensure that we attend to these priorities. This year will be filled with challenges, and we must remain clear in our efforts to heal, rebuild, and recover. At the September 28 board meeting, we will hear from our DSSA team and school leaders about the four key actions, excuse me, four key areas in action. Central office and school-based leaders will provide additional insight on the opening of schools. So we will continue, next slide, please. We will continue to update the board, our community, and Team BCPS during these challenging times. Our partnership is critical to ensuring a safe and successful year for all of our students. Just a reminder, the Central Office and school-based leadership will provide an update on September 28 regarding opening of schools. This concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, Dr. Williams. The next item on the agenda is the Board Chair's report. It's my report. And I have a video, I think, is it ready, Tracy? Or is the video, my video, ready? Okay. Great, yes. I find that it's easier to say everything in a video, so I like to do this because it's been a lot going on, school's back, and I think it was good. So yes, if we could go ahead and play that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Welcome to the new school year, Baltimore County. I am Makita Scott, the Chair of the Board of Education of Baltimore County, and I am delighted to welcome you to a new year in our public schools. In this series, I am putting the spotlight on BCPS students and educators for an inside look at teaching and learning today. And from what I saw on the first day of the new school year, our students and teachers were eager to get right to all of that teaching and learning. Along with our superintendent, Dr. Williams, and fellow board members, I visited Lockraven High School in Towson, Cockeysville Middle School, Scotts Branch Elementary School in Ranlestown, and Catonsville Elementary School. I have never been more proud of our students, our teachers, and all those who made our first day back in school possible. It had been 17 long months away from our schools for most of our students, but thanks to our educators and the support staffs at each school, the terrific custodians and grounds workers, the wonderful cafeteria staff, and of course, our amazing bus drivers, the first day and week went off smoothly and full of both focus and joy. Scenes like these were repeated in every school across Baltimore County, all 175 of them, and I could tell everyone was glad to be back in school. Over and over, the most common observation I heard was how nice it was to hear the excited voices and happy hellos of our students back in the classroom. So we are off to a great start in Baltimore County schools, and I cannot wait until next time to report all the great news coming from our students, staff, and schools every day. I thank you very much for joining me, and I will see you next time on From the Chairwoman's Corner.
Is it over? Thank you. Yes, and I just, I wanted to, again, make sure that I thanked everyone and for all that you do, those in front and those behind the scenes that are keeping our schools going, and from, like I said, our ground staff to custodial staff to our teachers, to our administrators, everyone, our bus drivers, because you are the reason that we're able to do everything and support the needs of all of our children. So thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the student member of the board's report, and for that, we have Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Superintendent Williams, board members, the public, and students of BCPS. I want to start off by thanking all of our BCPS staff for allowing for a successful implementation into in-person learning these past few weeks. My fellow students and I are excited and eager to be back in the voting. We have noticed some hiccups, it hasn't always been smooth, but the response of our teachers, administrators, and so many more individuals has been tremendous. So can we please give a big round of applause for all of the hardworking staff members on the ground in our schools? Thank you. I also want to say that it was an honor to visit Sandwood Elementary School and March State Elementary School on the first day of school. It was so exciting to be in my community in the Essex area, visiting those schools with some of our board members and Dr. Williams. So thank you to the principals, administrators, teachers, and everyone at those schools for allowing me to visit and for being such a welcoming force. Now, for my report. As a student, for the longest time, my voice, what I literally say and how and when I say it, was all I had. While our county council members and county executive lead our county, the Maryland General Assembly makes decisions about our state, and our congresspeople and representatives make decisions on Capitol Hill, I've had adults representing not me, but my parents and the adults around me. My fellow students and I get to send in ballots to practice practicing civic engagement. And so it wasn't until I learned about the student member of the board that I realized there was actually a voice for me in public office. When I found out about SMOB in my freshman year, well, I found out about a role that actually made an impact, a public role that actually meant something. But there's one condition. My representative back in freshman year, the person who was advocating for me, well, they couldn't vote on one of the most important things in our education, and that is the budget. Today, I find myself sitting here, as so many student members of boards before me have sat, powerless. Tonight, we are going to be voting on the Capitol Budget, with renovations for all 175 schools we have in BCPS on the line, with the future of our school system and our resource distribution on the line, and I can do nothing but, as usual, use my voice. We, the students, deserve to have a say in which of our schools will be affected by the Capitol Budget, but right now, we don't. We deserve to, because we are the ones who walk the halls every day. We're the ones who will be impacted by these projects. We're the ones that are going to be learning as halls are being renovated, as we're being relocated for construction projects and sent to alternative centers for learning with construction, as our education is disrupted for current renovations for future generations to have better schools. And so, do you know what this vote, the vote on our Capitol Budget symbolizes tonight, regardless of its result? It symbolizes 111,000 people being silenced. It symbolizes their one representative on this board, the only person they could choose to be here, the one student that they selected to be their voice, stripped of a say in the matter. I mean, talk about disenfranchisement. Board colleagues, I urge you to, when the time comes, assist me in an attempt to rectify this issue. Assist me in a fight to grant students the right to have a full seat at the table, not a partial seat with partial voting rights, when we're on a contentious issue like with the decision of whether or not to renovate or replace Delaney in Towson High School, can actually receive full student input and full student vote. Because all I can do here tonight is fight and ask questions for what I believe is best for students, as the person who represented them. All I can do, as usual, is use my voice on this budget matter. And I hope that is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is action taken in closed session, and for that, I call on Mr. Mercedes.
Good evening, board members. Earlier this evening, the board met in closed session and discussed two matters that need to be addressed in open session. The first is the ratification of the agreement between BCPS and the ESPBC for the 2021-2022 school year. And the second matter, the board rendered a decision in an administrative appeal, case number HE21-23. Now would be an appropriate time to confirm the actions taken in closed session on those matters.
May have a motion to approve the action taken in closed session, which include the ratification of the agreement between BCPS and ESPBC for 2021 through 2022, and Hearing Examiner's Case H.E.21-23, and to authorize Ms. Gover to sign on behalf of board members. So moved, Matt.
Second row.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Gover may have a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Rob?
Yes.
Ms. Coss? Ms. Snack? Ms. McMillian?
Yes.
Abstain?
Yes. I retract that.
Mr. Offerman? Ms. Hester?
Yes.
Dr. Hager? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is contract awards, and for that, I call on Ms. Joe, Chair of the Building and Contracts Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. The Building and Contracts Committee met yesterday, and we bring 12 contracts to the board for approval unanimously. However, Ms. Scott, I would like to separate out contract number four, JME 503 2022, IT Security Services and Solutions.
Okay, so you want to separate out number four?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Okay, so do I have a motion then to approve items K1 through, since we're separating out four, it would be through-
Three.
Three.
Five.
And then five through 12. K5 through 12. Is that properly stated?
Yes.
Okay.
So move, Thomas.
Second row.
Thank you. There's no second needed, since it's, the recommendation comes from the committee. Any discussion? Yes, Dr. Hager?
I was just curious if the playground equipment has been earmarked for any specific school, or if it's just an allotment of money for playground equipment?
Mr. Dixit? Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Sarris.
It's used for both, we have a maintenance and a replacement contract. The maintenance items are as they occur, and the capital projects that entail playground would be aligned with our capital budget. But I don't have a list of schools in advance that we've planned expenditures for.
Thank you. That was it.
Any additional questions? Okay. Ms. Gover, if we could take a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Robb?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby? Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joez?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman? Mr. Offerman? Caster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And now if we could look at item K4? Have a motion to approve item K4? Okay. So there's no motion to approve item K4?
I'll move it, Ms. Joez.
Okay. There's no discuss, excuse me, no second, since it comes from committee? Any discussion on K4? Yes, Mr. Kuhn.
Just a question. We were handed a new revised item, and it differs, I believe, from the amounts that we're voting on. Can we reconcile that somehow?
There's been a reduction in the amount, and Mr. Sarris can explain that.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Joez and Mr. Kuhn. Based on the questions and the discussions that we had yesterday, we did go through the documentation. And on page two of the exhibit, we added, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six bulleted items, which in more detail specify the exact services that we're planning, and also made sure that this total was representative of just the first two years and eleven months of the contract. And also broke out an amount which is less specific, the next to the last bullet, five point one five million, which we, Department of Technology, recommend to address issues that are discovered during the various annual assessments and penetration testing that are done, if there should be a response needed, as well as trying to be prepared with the authority to respond in an emergency to something similar to that we had in 2020, when having contracts in place became a delay of sorts. And so the other thing we did, that contingency amount to address issues, we also scaled that back. So between the itemized items and the scaled back contingency amount, we revised the total just to cover the first three years of the agreement.
Yes, Ms. Hen?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. And thank you, Mr. Sarris and Mr. Corns, for this additional detail. This is extremely helpful, so I appreciate it and your responsiveness to the committee's questions on this contract. Thank you. My question regarding the contingency, the five million, is that what you're referring to, Mr. Sarris?
Yes.
As the contingency? Okay. So that is a percentage of the spending authority of eleven million, is?
Correct. That's part of the total.
Is part of the total? So half of that you're allowing for contingency?
It's still in there.
Roughly?
So, Ms. Hen, with the spending authority in place, this is, as it's only spending authority, not representing actual dollars and cents. This was a number that we put in place based on previous experience. I'll use the OnTrak experience where tape backups that needed to be expedited across the country to be restored. We tried to calculate together the amount of money that we had to put in place in order to address a large-scale concern as we had in 2020. But in conversation with making this contract to fit some conversations that we'd had yesterday around the board being able to have some understanding of the contracts that were coming forward, we took this as a direct decrease in order to address that, so that if something were to arise, we have a small amount of money that could be put into place at any point in time. But above that, being able to come back to the board and say, here's where the additional spends would need to be.
Okay.
And I guess I'll just add that our current costs as a result of the cyber attack are just over nine million dollars. So this is considerably less than that. Of course, we don't, and hope that we'll have anything that dramatic, but...
Right. I would hope that if an additional five million were requested for something catastrophic, that that would come to the border, that we'd be aware of the need to exercise the additional five million in spending authority to respond to something, that that would be something we'd have visibility.
In an event that would be that large, Ms. Hen, you would absolutely be aware, in great detail through Dr. Williams, if that event occurred to be that large.
Sure, and we certainly want you to have absolutely all the resources you need to be able to respond to that. So thank you for this information. I appreciate it, gentlemen.
Yes, Ms. Mac?
Thank you, Mr. Corns. And Mr. Sarris, how does this contract align with the IT findings and recommendations in the Public Works Report?
So at this time, Ms. Mac, we're going to hold that question, because there's a lot more work we need to do with the efficiency report that you referenced. So thank you for that. You will hear some updates from me during that presentation.
Mr. McMillian?
Gentlemen, I compared the front pages of what we received yesterday compared to what we received today. And the only difference I see on the front page is the contract spending authority. Yesterday was fifteen million dollars; today, it's eleven million dollars. I subtracted that out, so there's a difference of four million dollars, four million, twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. So in twenty-four hours, you guys have saved us four million dollars? Is that right, because you went back and studied your numbers?
We scaled back the proposal and ensured that it was just the initial term of the contract. And we haven't saved any money, because we haven't spent any. But we're scaling back the breadth and the term of the proposal.
So you haven't spent any, we haven't saved any, but in the end, it's going to be four million dollars less than what you proposed yesterday?
Yes, we think this is adequate to meet our needs for three years with this reduction of four million dollars. And it's hopefully much less in the event that we don't have any major issues.
Thanks for that thorough job. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Kuhn?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up with Mr. McMillian's questions. So we're all crystal clear. This money is for the next two years and eleven months of spend.
Correct.
And the following six years, which are two, three-year terms, there are zero dollars allotted to that timeframe.
Correct. There's zero dollars here. There is, there are, if the budget were to remain in its current state, there are budgeted dollars, but we would, we need...
But this contract...
Yes. So when MEAC exercises that first three-year option, we would bring this back to the board to join in that extension.
Right.
With additional spending authority, whatever it might be.
Right. My point is, yesterday, we were talking about money covering the two extension periods.
Correct, and this does not.
And this does not. So that is the four million dollars that my esteemed colleague...
That's part of it, and scaling back that contingent amount as well, yes.
All right, thank you for...
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Hen?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Do we have any other alternative procurement vehicles for these vendors? Should the MEAC contract not be renewed or something fall through with these vendors? Do you know?
I think Mr. Corns and I reviewed that some of the other contracts that are in place would permit similar nature of expenses.
Similar terms?
Yeah.
Or any other ICPAs that we could use? With, I'm sorry, similar pricing? Are we getting competitive rates through the MEAC arrangement?
Yeah, we have several MEAC contract, PEPM, several large-scale. They give us very competitive rates with floors and required discounts. But we always do better than even advertised, based on our size. So in a pinch, if we were to come into a point where this MEAC contract was not, where they did not exercise their three-year extension, we would not be left in a lurch. We would have several other vehicles. This one happens to be well-aligned for the security aspects to keep our lines clean.
Sure. And are we locked into this one with any particular vendor? If one were to offer us more advantageous...
No, we have the choice to advertise out to the vendors that are available on this, as well as any other contract vehicle that may be of need. Or if some security is secure need or IT need is identified that is outside of the scope of these vendors, we also have other contract vehicles by which we could exercise.
Okay. Or should we need additional contractors to work with? There are no restrictions in terms of working with these?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Gover, if we could take a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Abstain?
Ms. Hen?
Abstain?
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joez?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Mr. Offerman, are you there? Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Yes, we're taking a vote. Ms. Gover called your name.
Yes. The answer is yes.
Ms. Caster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a privately funded capital project for Gunpowder Elementary School. For that, I call on Dr. Roberts.
Good evening, Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Superintendent Williams, and members of the board. Joining me virtually this evening through the live link is Ms. Wendy Cunningham. So tonight, I bring forward for approval a privately funded capital improvement project for the sign of the entrance of the newly revitalized playground at Gunpowder Elementary School. It will be dedicated as part of the Officer Caprio Playground Project. The PTA at Gunpowder Elementary School began the Officer Caprio Playground Project in November of 2019. The value of this donation is three thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. This will cover the cost of the sign, design preparation, fabrication and installation, materials, equipment, and fees. In accordance with policy and Rule 7330, this request has progressed through all normal internal processes for review and is brought forward to you this evening for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the privately funded capital project for Gunpowder Elementary School's freestanding sign display? So moved. Hen? Is there a second?
Second, Kuhn.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Gover, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Robb?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joez?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Caster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consideration of a privately funded capital project for Timonium Elementary School. And for that, I call on Ms. Byers.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Superintendent Williams, and members of the board. Tonight, I'm bringing forward for your approval a privately funded capital improvement project to both renovate the existing playground and build a new primary playground at Timonium Elementary School. The existing playground is currently used by kindergarten through fifth grade. Updates are needed to this playground to ensure that the equipment is accessible and appropriate for students in grade two through grade five. Additionally, this project will provide a new playground for younger learners in kindergarten through grade two. This project is being funded by the Timonium Elementary PTA along with a state grant from the Maryland Board of Public Works. The total cost of this project and the value of the donation is estimated at eighty thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand of which is coming from money raised by the Timonium PTA. And the additional twenty-five thousand dollars has been funded by the state grant from the Board of Public Works. Of that eighty thousand, forty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars is for materials from Game Time, with the remainder going to the installation. The renovation of the existing playground and the installation of the new one will provide a space that fosters social and emotional skills through dramatic play. These playgrounds will be maintained by BCPS ground workers, and the PTA of Timonium will assume any overrun in cost. In accordance with policy and Rule 7330, this request has progressed through all the normal internal processes of review. Following board approval, the goal is to have this project completed within two to three weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the privately funded capital project for Timonium Elementary School's new playground and playground improvements? So moved, Ms. Caster.
Second, Ms. Cazey.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. McMillian?
I said something similar to this last meeting, and August, about the Gunpowder Playground. I'm really excited that these school communities have the opportunity to develop... These are model playgrounds. I look at it, I have that background, they're model. But the thing that I said last time was, it was, I think that was eighty-some thousand dollars that Gunpowder were spending. This is fifty-five thousand dollars. We just passed two contracts, the total, if I'm not mistaken, two hundred and twenty, two million, two hundred thousand dollars related to playgrounds. I just don't understand why we can't get together with facilities and these local schools and look at these and try to... I know how hard it is to raise fifty-five thousand dollars and eighty thousand dollars. And it's just, I wish that we could cooperate and work this out and save these people that, some of this playground money that could be directed someplace else into the classroom. I'm happy that they're getting these facilities. I'm extremely happy with that. I'm not complaining about that at all. It's the financial piece of it and how that we've got two million, two hundred thousand dollars, and these people are spending fifty-five thousand dollars, and how we just can't work, we can't sit down at a table and figure this out and save those people some of that money that they could redirect someplace. Thank you. That's what I want to say.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing done. Ms. Gover, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Robb?
Yes.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joez?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Caster?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mic was turned off. All right, the next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Consideration of board policies. Members of the board, the Policy and Review Committee asks the board accept the committee's recommendation to amend the following board policies. Policy 0100, basic board commitments, philosophy, equity. Policy 3800, non-instructional services, planning, land use, planning and zoning activities. Policy 4011, personnel, general professional learning. Policy 410... Policy 4104, personnel conduct, technology, acceptable use policy for authorized users renamed as acceptable use policy for technology and social media for authorized users. Policy 5130, students withdrawal from school prior to graduation. Policy 5210, students promotion and retention, grading and reporting. Policy 5600, students responsibilities and rights. And last, but not least, the new policy 8601 is being pulled and returned to the Policy Review Committee for additional language. So these recommendations are presented to you on tonight's agenda as Exhibit M. Do I have a motion to adopt the recommendations of the board's Policy and Review Committee?
So moved, Row.
Thank you. No second is needed since the recommendation comes from the committee. Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Causey.
Madam Chair, could we separate out Policy 5210?
5210? 5210 is the promotion and retention, grading and reporting?
Yes.
Okay. Can we separate that out now, Mr. Bressadis? Since the motion was made to approve them, is it an appropriate time now to separate it? Okay. Yep, so we can separate out 5210. Okay, so then I would then, I guess, make another motion to see if we can approve Policy 0100, 3800, 4011, 4104, 5130, and Policy 5600.
So moved, Row.
Thank you. Any discussion on those? Hearing none. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt? Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pastore?
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. All right, and now 5210. Do I have a motion to adopt Policy 5210, students promotion and retention, grading and reporting?
So moved, Thomas.
Thank you. No second is needed since it comes from committee, and is there a discussion? Ms. Causey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Policy 5210 has had a lot of discussion in policy review, but also in community at large when it was passed in 2015 and implemented in 2016. And in policy review, we had talked about hearing an update on the progress and the impact of the implementation of that, because I felt, and there was other conversation, that there are either things in the policy that need to be strengthened, or there may be some things with the implementation that are not in line with the policy. So, one of the things that the policy talks about is that the grading is going to be consistent and timely, and there's been updates from staff and in PRC that at the high school level, there's not consistent grading scales, that some schools had the opportunity to choose, whether it was a 50 to 100, or whether it was 0 to 100. And that in and of itself can provide some very significant inconsistencies, but also, we've heard consistently that a lot of people feel that having a low score of a 50 is not really consistent with what the students are achieving, and it really doesn't clarify for the parents and the students, and even the teacher next year that looks at a grade that might be a B, but really, the student didn't master 80% of the content, or, you know, and it's not a direct correlation, the grades with mastery. We know that. But, so, I'm not sure that there's a rush to pass this, but what I would really like is for there to be a time that the full board can receive an update from Dr. Williams and the team on the implementation and impacts, and how it is applied throughout the school system. So, I don't know if Dr. Williams, if you would like to hear if other board members would like an update like that, or if that's something that was already in the timeline for some of the updates that you're providing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Causey. Yes, Dr. Hager, next, but I would ask, isn't that something, does curriculum address that? That's what I was going to ask in the Curriculum Committee. Is that something that where some of Ms. Causey's questions and some of these items are addressed there? Dr. Hager, if you could, or Ms. Pastore, would you?
Well, similarly, I was just going to mention that we specifically added the reporting line for that reason. I think it was last meeting when we discussed this, or.
In curriculum?
No, it's in the policy. The superintendent will provide an annual report on the implementation of this policy. So, I agree with you completely, but I also feel that it's in the policy, if that makes sense. So, but I do completely agree with everything you said, but it's, I see that it's in there, so.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I also think, when you were mentioning the LSs, the 50% grade, it says, A, grades will have a consistent meaning throughout the school system and be based on grade level, and course expectations is outlined in the curriculum. I feel like there will be consistency within the school system once we, this policy is passed. And I think that, like what Dr. Hager said about the annual report, I think it's addressed in the policy, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Hen, and then Ms. Pastore.
So, I like the addition that was added that Dr. Hager spoke to and that Mr. Thomas spoke to about the implementation. I think that's great that we have the reporting and that we've covered that, and that checks the box for me. I share Mrs. Causey's concern still about the grades will have consistent meaning. I think it's partially addressed in Item C, that grades shall be based on a body of evidence. My concern is that that body of evidence, what I've heard, is not implemented consistently, and I don't know that that's fair for all of our students throughout the system, because that body of evidence can mean different things to different teachers. And I've seen that implemented vastly differently. So, I think we can act on that. Once we start receiving those reports and make data-driven decisions, or hear from the superintendent as to what his recommendations are, but I share Mrs. Causey's concerns, because I don't think, at this point, that the policy is clear enough with Point A under standards for 3A. So, I still think it needs work on that point.
Yes, Ms. Pastore.
Thank you. I would like, I don't know if Dr. Williams wants to address it now, but I know that as we move one into the compass, and the work he's doing with the compass, and other work that may be coming out, that there will be more clarity, but clearly, as we look at the gaps in instruction in our system, and success on our tests from the past, we know that there are some discrepancies. So, I know, working with Dr. McComas, and Yakt, Yakt, Yarbro, Shashar, yeah, okay, and Dr. Yarbro, and the things that we've been discussing in curriculum, and will continue, we can bring more clarity to it. So, I want to know from you, Dr. Williams, would you like for us to come back to curriculum and do anything else with this? Because we do need to be a little bit more specific. Yes, it's here, but it's been here, and we still have discrepancies in terms of how our children are fed. How would you like us to proceed with the Curriculum Committee, or with you, or none of the above?
Madam Chair, may I respond to it?
Please.
So, thank you, thank you, board, for raising this issue. I do want to associate myself with Dr. Hager as a reminder to the board that we had the same conversation two weeks ago about the policy, and I made a request to put in there about the reporting. And I want to be, I want us to be very careful that we are making this broad brush about what's being consistent or not, based on what you're hearing. The point of this is to dig deep, to talk to our principals, our teachers, our parents, our students about the implementation. So, give us the opportunity to develop that mechanism. It may be through the curriculum, it may be through the Equity Committee, it may be through some other forums, in which I work with our partners to gather that feedback. So, I think it's important that this language is, what I thought was, meeting the requests of the board two weeks, two weeks ago, I believe, and for us to then develop a plan, to have that annual report, to see where there are gaps, and to celebrate where there are successes. The same points that were raised today were the similar points raised before, which got us to the reporting of annual, of this annual report of implementation. The curriculum and team under Dr. McComas' leadership have been looking at the actual implementation of grading and reporting. We agreed to look at it, to revise it, to get the feedback, but the manner in which we'll get it, we'll look through the Curriculum Committee, we'll look through the Equity Committee, and any other vehicle to get the information. So, when I saw this, and we, and the board approved or agreed at the time of this language, the team and I talked about that annual report, where we can report out, and maybe make changes, and if we do make changes, then we have to educate our teachers, and our administrators, and our parents, and students about the upcoming year, like we would do anything else. We make changes, we inform, we finalize the material or booklet, and we have it available. So, that's how I'm seeing it.
So, you're moving forward based on the discussion we had last time, so this is, you're good here?
I'm good.
Okay, then that's what matters. Thank you. Operations.
Thank you, Ms. Matt.
I share Ms. Causey's concerns. In the Public Works document, there's a statement that there is a concern about the lack of accountability in holding principals and teachers responsible for implementing the BCPS curriculum with fidelity, and the inconsistency with administering unit assessments, or whether they're administered at all. So, I understand what Mr. Thomas just said, but I am concerned when we have a finding like that, that, you know, how are we grading kids consistently when some schools are administering unit assessments, other schools aren't, some classes are, some classes aren't? So, I still have the same concerns that I had about this policy the last time.
Thank you. Ms. Pastore?
Okay, I'm pretty sure that's essentially what I said when I started off. And I think your answer was that based on the last conversation, it's going to be addressed. And I need to remind, well, yeah, I need to remind everyone that the job that they have to do at this point, and I'm going to look right at Mr. Kuhn, because he brought it up at the last meeting when we were having the conversation about compression, that a lot of things are getting ready to change. So, we can't keep starting and stopping, because we also have Blueprint for Maryland's Future, which means there are going to be a number of things that are going to happen that are going to, that's going to impact on instruction. They need to have the time to address that.
Okay. So, we pulled this out, we discussed it. Is the recommendation that it go back to PRC for additional? Okay, then. So, are we ready to take a vote, then, Ms. Gauver?
Ms. Row?
Yes.
Ms. Cos?
I thought that I made the motion.
Mr. Thomas moved.
Mr. Thomas moved, yes. And then we have discussion. Thank you for clarifying.
Ms. Causey?
Abstain.
Ms. Hen?
No.
Mr. McMillian?
No.
Ms. Joes?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Hager?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. What was favor?
Favor is eight?
Eight, thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the fiscal year 2023 state capital budget request. And for this, I call on Dr. Scriven and Mr. Dixitt.
So, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. This evening, we're gathered to seek your approval for the FY 2023 state capital budget. We have put together a presentation, which is going to be a recap of some of the work sessions and questions that we have received. We have grounded this presentation in what we are presenting as the facts to the board for your consideration. You've heard a lot of deliberation. We are simply trying to adhere to the schedule, and why hence we are seeking your approval this evening, as this document has to be presented to submission for the state on October 4th. So, with that said, I am going to yield the floor to Mr. Dixitt. I do believe Mr. Plaid is the PowerPoint teed up and ready to go, sir?
It's ready to go, dear.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Dixitt.
Thank you, Dr. Scriven. Good evening, Chair Scott, Vice Chair Hen, Dr. Williams, and members of the board. I just want to go over a little bit of what we have done so far. The capital program was introduced in the meeting of August 10th, followed by a work session in the meeting of August 24th. And after that, there were a lot of questions that were received. We have attempted to respond to all the questions that we received by August 16th, and we continue to provide responses to other questions. So, just as Dr. Scriven indicated, we'll again be sharing and capturing some of the information that we have already shared with you, and submit our program after your approval to state by October 4th. So, this is the schedule that we have shared with you earlier, and then I'll go over some of the changes to the program that have been made as compared to what was presented in '22. So, Northeast Area Elementary School, Red House Run Elementary School, those two have been fully funded by the state. The next four projects from 2022, Vetford Elementary School, Summit Park Elementary School, Northeast Area Middle School, and Pine Grove Middle School. We have been informed that Built to Learn Act funds will be available for those projects, so we have removed it from our '23 submission. If there will be any money that will be needed, we'll come back to the board and request that and share that information. The other change that has been made, that we have added Dundalk High School addition as part of our request for 2023. There were two projects that you have heard quite a bit about tonight. Towson High School and Delaney High School, they have been changed from replacement to addition renovation. That has been done based on the recommendation of the feasibility report that was requested by the County Planning Board, and the MIIPASS study that was requested by the board and Baltimore County Government. So, as a result of those two, we are recommending that the classification be changed from replacement to addition renovation. Roof replacement projects that were fully funded have been removed from the '22, from the '23 request. I would like to acknowledge the funds received for Halliburton Middle School, Landstown Middle School, Winfield Elementary, and Villa Cresta. They are 100% county-funded projects. So, we would like to thank county folks for that. The other item is the addition to this request, and you'll see a list of projects, systemic projects, that have been added to FY 2023 capital budget. systemic projects that have been added to FY 2023 capital budget. Jaapawee Elementary School Firearm, Church Lane Elementary School Roof Replacement, Parkville High School Baller Replacement, Deer Park Middle School Roof Replacement, Essex Elementary School Chiller Replacement, Timber Grove Elementary School Roof Replacement, Milford Mill Academy Roof Replacement, Martin Boulevard Elementary School Chiller Replacement, Ridge Ruxton Special Education School Chiller Replacement, Pikesville Middle School Chiller Replacement, Chesapeake High School HVAC Renovation, Owings Mills High School Electrical Upgrade, Chesapeake Terrace Elementary School Chiller Replacement, Newtown Elementary School Chiller Replacement and Logan, Logan Elementary School Chiller Replacement. These have been added based on the information that we have and as confirmed under My I Pass that these are critical projects. We are going to a little bit recapture My I Pass recommendations that have already been shared with you. So the Dundalk High School addition renovation, renovation was, addition was added under the My I Pass that they shared with you in one of the presentation. Towson High School renovation addition was included in My I Pass, and that has been added to this. In future, they have asked us to conduct two studies to take a deeper dive for Northeast and for Southeast area. Northeast has, what the, the recommendations are, some additions, and I'm not going to go over all of them because you, you have already been informed about it, or creation or building a new high school. So we are going to look into the capacity and condition of all of those high schools and do a detailed study, a deeper dive for those schools, and come back to you when the study is complete. The second piece that they have recommended is the southeast part, which is Sparrows Point Middle High School or a new Sparrows Point Middle School and high school renovations. Recently, this is the additional information they have shared with us, another option for the southeast area is to explore consolidation of elementary schools to accommodate separation of the Sparrows Point Middle School and High School. And what that entails is that look at the potential of consolidating two elementary schools. That'll provide a site that may be able to handle a middle school. So those two studies have to be completed, and we'll share that with you once we have the more information, complete information on that. One of the other points that we want to emphasize here based on My I Pass recommendation is that there are 15 projects that they have called as premium projects, and we'll talk a little bit about it later on. They said that if we change them to replacement in lieu of addition renovation, that will establish a precedent that's not fiscally sustainable. And we'll go over some of those numbers, and we'll also share the leveraging of local funds to, to get capital funds. These 15 projects that are included in My I Pass are on the next slide, and I'm not going to take all the names because that's right in front of you. These projects were, this list was prepared as a result of multiple numerous conversations with stakeholders and community groups throughout county. And they, it was their wish list to have these 15 projects, which included Towson High School and Delaney High School. And all of these projects, what My I Pass, under the My I Pass recommendations are to manage the cost of those projects, and they call it, instead of replacement, renovation be performed at those two schools. My I Pass study, little bit of refreshing the memory of some of the new board members. In the past, couple of years ago, at the request of our board, county had provided funds to initiate a long-range plan, development of a long-range plan. That study is in excess of $1 million, performed by Cannon Design, and it's been, it's totally funded by county, and we'd like to acknowledge their help. That, that forms the basis of our future planning, and some of that information, we are sharing that with you right now. So there has been a lot of conversation about state participation, their concurrence with, with replacement or, or, or renovation addition, and what are the implications when the funding is concerned. So we have attempted to simplify that. This, this is the, this is, this is the conversation we started in the last meeting, and we wanted to capture that here again for, make it simple. So for a hypothetical project of $60 million in renovation compared with $120 million in replacement, we wanted to share with you that if a state doesn't agree with the replacement as a result of the feasibility study, the share of the state is $36.6 million, which is the same as for renovation. So that puts additional fiscal burden on county funding if we decide to replace that building, that school. And that amount is $60 million of additional county amount that has to be spent. That $60 million has the leveraging capability of another $94 million of state fund. So if board approves a project that a state does not support, and the cost of the project is $120 million, it has a $154 million impact on our capital planning. And if the state concurs, that's the second piece that we have summarized here, even then, there is additional amount of $23.4 million that county has to fund, which has leveraging capability of another $36 million. So net loss to, to the program, to the capital program is $60 million total cost to the program. The next slide that you will see is, you have heard a lot about feasibility study, and we wanted to share the COMAR 14.39.02.06L that, that clarifies and the requirement that we have, that the maximum state construction allocation for a replace, replacement school based on the cost of renovating an existing school. So simplifying that language is that if feasibility study indicates that based on 40-year life cycle cost, it is more cost-effective to renovate the building, but we still proceed with replacement. It has cost implications, and those cost implications are that the state will only fund to the level of renovation and may impose a 15% reduction on their share. That's what COMAR indicates. That's what we have followed in the past, and there are a lot of questions being asked that this is not true, this is the best information we have, we have always followed that, and we intend to follow in future also. Other point I want to clarify is that there's a lot of chatter on the social media about feasibility study. Feasibility study for state to, to justify a replacement is a document that is included in, in their guideline, IAC Guideline 203, and it is not the same as scope of, scope of work analysis that we have conducted in a lot of schools. So we do not want to mix that. Feasibility study requirement for state is for state participation if we choose to replace a school. Any other kind of analysis and studies is not the same thing. It's a totally different document, and I wanted to clarify that because there is a lot of confusion in, 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 in social media about how many different feasibility studies we have done. Feasibility study, so-called feasibility study that were done in previous renovation of four high schools, they were not the same as the feasibility study where we need a replacement of an existing building. So the next few slides is try to share with you some of the cost implications to other schools, and that is my I Pass document. Replacing Towson High School and Delaney High School will defer approximately 41 renovation projects beyond 15 years. And you have heard a lot about all of these projects will not need renovation within that 15 years. That is false information. That is absolutely false information. Some of the projects that we have done in last 15 years already need addition. So while 15-year time period was developed by Cannon Design through community input based on community preference, and 15 years is also a state requirement for eligibility of a renovation project, 15 years is, that's how the number was derived. There are roofs that were needed in projects that were completed as renovation addition projects that were within 15 years. There are technology improvements that might be needed within 15 years. There are additions that are needed within 15 years. So I just wanted to clarify that because there is a lot of misinformation floating around, and whether we support My I Pass or not, but those remain the fact. So these 15, these projects, if we replace Towson and Delaney, and again, there were, there, there are comments about we don't want to do that. This is not whether we want to do it or not. We are engineers and architects, and we love replacing buildings. What board and us are in charge with is looking at the fiscal sustainability and how that impacts all students and all schools. So if a decision is made to replace those two schools, these are 41 schools that will be impacted. They will not be renovated within 15 years, and this is not our study. This is an independent study done by a company that was selected on a national search basis. So if we also decide to replace Towson High School and Delaney High School, and so we are setting a precedent that we are going to replace buildings, there are 90, 90 renovation projects that will be beyond 15 years that will potentially be included. We'll defer approximately 41, and what is the, if you take all of the premium projects that they have included. So we are, the, the two things that we want to clarify here, just the impact of Towson and Delaney is 41 schools. Impact of replacing all 15 premium projects is 90, 90 schools. So we are setting a precedent that will have major bearing, and then we'll, and we also have a map here that shows the location of those projects. So if you look at this map and the impact on schools, this is not in one part of the county. This is in the same part of the, a lot of projects are in the same part where Towson and Delaney is or Northeast. So it is not that it is only going to impact on the east side or west side, it's all over the county, it's evenly distributed. Now, we also, for the sake of simplicity, this is again My Pass information, so that we all understand what we are approving. Performing all premium projects will defer approximately 90 renovation projects beyond 15 years. My Pass estimated cost for premium projects is $1,260 million. My Pass estimated cost for prioritized renovation is $310 million. I want all of you to look at these numbers and make up your mind. If we decide to spend $1.2 billion instead of $310 million, the resulting extra funding needed to perform all premium project is $950 million. And while these numbers will change, I want to make sure that the enormity, enormity of these dollars are understood while, you know, you approve or disapprove any one project or on, or, or all project. $950 million is close to a billion dollar. Total funds for, from Built to Learn Act that we'll get is $377 million. The total needs that system has is $4.7 billion. The total money that we have available is $2.5 billion. So what funds will be available in the next 50, 15 years? This gap is about half of all of that money that's coming in 15 years. What I also wanted to share is that when we don't do a project, when we don't even do renovation project, what it means out in the field. There are boilers, there are chillers, there are roof leaks. There is not a day when Dr. Scriven doesn't wake me up at 5:00 in the morning saying that this chiller is not functioning. This is when we are funding at the current level. So I just wanted to make sure and be on record that five year down the road, when you see 15 chillers breaking down, when you see 15 roofs leaking, this is the decision that we are making tonight, this will be the impact of that decision. So with that, and this is not that we don't want to build new schools, we love building new schools. In last 10 to 15 years, Mr. Plaid's team has built over $2 billion worth of schools, renovation, new construction, roofs, chillers and boilers. So we like to do that, we'd like to continue to do that, but we wanted everybody to understand what's the impact of that. So with that, since we have already answered a lot of questions, and we'll continue to answer as we get them, your approval is requested for us to meet the state submission deadline of October 4th. And just one more statement, we still have to prepare that big book to meet state requirements.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. Dixitt. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 23 state capital budget request as presented in Exhibit N?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, passed through.
Any discussion? Oh, looks like quite a bit. You have a discussion?
I had my hand on it before you spoke to the motion.
Oh, I didn't see your hand. Okay. Discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you.
I move to amend the fiscal year.
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor.
Ms. Joes, I had my hand raised before Ms.
Oh, but there is a motion on the floor that was.
Raised her motion.
But there is a motion that was properly made and seconded.
Then I amend, I move to amend the motion on the floor.
Okay.
I move to amend the fiscal year 2023 state capital budget request by updating Priority Nine, School Towson High, such that the project is replacement school, 1688 seats, and inserting a new row as Priority 10, School Towson High, project replacement school, 1688 seats. Type of approval funding, total state funding share, $66,532,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023, $66,532,000. And updating current Priority 10, School Delaney High, such that the project is replacement school, 2070 seats, and inserting a new row as Priority 11, School Delaney High, project replacement school, 2070 seats. Type of approval funding, total state funding share, $73,122,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023, $73,122,000. And incrementing the remaining current rows 11 through 36 accordingly.
Second.
Second.
I did just email that to the full board. I also would like to speak to the motion.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I've not stated it, so it's not properly stated, and it's not actually on the floor yet. It's not the property of the Assembly yet, so I, and I don't see it in my email, so.
Would you like to read it?
I can't read that, it's too small, no. I need to properly state it, so, is it your motion or Ms. Rose?
It's my motion.
It's your motion, okay, but Ms. Rose, you emailed it?
Had it, so I emailed it to everyone.
Oh, okay, well, I did not get it. Did anyone else receive it? No? Some did, some didn't, okay. Let me see if I can. Now, that's an amendment to the motion? Mr. Mercedes, is that a proper amendment to the motion? Seems awfully, I don't know, convoluted.
It's an appropriate amendment.
The original motion on the floor was to approve the-
Fiscal year 23 state capital budget as presented in Exhibit N.
To approve it. I'll restate it.
I actually don't know.
I'm having a hard time following.
Yeah, I-
Would you like me to reread it?
It just seems that it's awfully long and complex for an amendment, and so I'm just not sure if it's an appropriate amendment for this motion.
Sure, there, the edits are as follows. I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 state capital budget request with the following amendments.
Mike?
I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 state capital budget request with the following amendments. Updating Priority 9, School Towson High, such that the project reads replacement school, 1,688 seats, and inserting a new row as Priority 10, School Towson High, project replacement school, 1,688 seats. Type of approval funding, total state funding share 66,532,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023, 66,532,000. And updating current Priority 10, School Delaney High, such that the project is replacement school, 2070 seats, and inserting a new row as Priority 11, School Delaney High, project replacement school, 2070 seats. Type of approval funding, total state funding share 73,122,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023, 73,122,000, and incrementing the remaining current rows 11 through 36 accordingly.
And it was seconded by whom?
Ms. Causey.
Ms. Causey seconded, okay, and I see it here. Thank you, Ms. Rose, for emailing it. So, it's to amend the motion on the floor, so I have to state it, so then we can discuss it. The motion was made by Ms. Hen to amend the fiscal year 2023 state capital budget request by updating Priority 9, school Towson High, such that the project is replacement school, 1,688 seats, and inserting a new row as Priority 10, School Towson High, project replacement school, 1,688 seats. Type of approval, F funding, total state funding share 66,532,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023, 66,532,000. And updating current Priority 10, School Delaney High, such that the project is replacement school, 2,070 seats, and inserting a new row as Priority 11, School Delaney High, project replacement school, 2,070 seats. Type of approval, F funding, total state funding share 73,122,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023, 73,122,000, and incrementing and remaining current rows 11-36 accordingly, and it was seconded by Ms. Causey. So, and then I believe Ms. Rose wanted to speak first, I want to make sure I get everybody in order, so it was Ms. Rose?
She did it. May I speak to my motion, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry?
May I speak to my motion?
Yes, you may speak to your motion, I want to make sure we get everyone, so you, then Ms. Rose, and then Ms. Mack, and then, okay, so it's just-
We might just go down.
Mr. Thomas, and so just everybody, all right. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hen.
Thank you. So, what has become clear to me since our last session, and since poring over data and reports, and more data and reports, is that we are not being asked to approve a capital request that reflects what is best for Delaney and Towson. That's not what the Cannon recommendation suggests, nor has BCPS ever said that a renovation is best. In fact, all of our documentation, including our comprehensive annual facilities report and our educational facilities master plan, indicate that we know a replacement is best, and we were moving in that direction until the my I-Pass recommendations were released. Instead, we are being asked to accept less than what is best for Delaney and Towson, so that others get something. But everyone gets something is not a facilities plan, and it doesn't truly meet anyone's needs. So, why would we accept less than what we know is best? Well, Mr. Dixitt told us in our last session, in his words, "We want to keep our funding partners happy." The thing is, I took an oath to do what's right by children and by our taxpayers. I didn't accept less for Lansdowne, and I won't accept less for Towson, Delaney, or any other school with needs. We have unprecedented levels of funding for school construction. There's no reason to accept less, and there's no reason to ask for what we need. The Towson facility study describes the replacement option as economical, expedient, and cost-sensitive. It's what these two schools need, and it's what we need to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. Ms. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Point of clarification, Ms. Scott, if I may, if Mr. Mercedes could verify this motion, if it's out of order, since the board does not have spending authority and Ms. Hen has actually added dollar amounts to that motion, is that something we can do?
Board can make it as part of its budget request, and whether that gets accepted or not by the funding authorities is another issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I support this amendment. The typical argument for renovation versus new building of schools in the past has been the renovation costs 60% of a new building. Our current capital budget request and the following recommendation of my I-Pass has the difference of a new school versus renovation at 12%. Every project we do has a 10% contingency, meaning we ask for funding in excess of 10% as we, in case we go over, which typically happens. Our cost projections are not so precise that we can hit an exact mark. It makes no sense to me to disrupt the education of students for almost their entire high school career, subjecting them to a construction zone and things like asbestos abatement, when we will likely spend on a renovation what a new school costs. It's also highly unfortunate that my I-Pass will be obsolete in three to four years, since the county council has chosen not to act on the APFO task force recommendations that clearly link development to overcrowded schools. Therefore, no matter what decision is made by the Board of Education as it pertains to capital funding for schools without significant changes in the adequate public facilities ordinance, develop will continue to outpace school construction, and we will not be able to keep pace with capacity needs, let alone aging school facilities. As it stands, we have $4 billion worth of needs and $2.5 billion worth of funding, and I'm not willing to let any community's needs go unmet or partially met, simply because politicians choose to take massive campaign donations from developer interests that control the Baltimore County Planning Board. These interest groups don't want to pay impact fees commensurate with what other developers in other counties pay. To raise the additional $1.5 billion needed to meet the needs of all schools, Baltimore County can develop public-private partnerships, charge builder impact fees, lobby the state and federal governments for more money, use our AAA bond rating to sell bonds to raise money, et cetera. So, I will not be supporting my I-Pass recommendations to renovate any schools that are in desperate need of replacement.
Thank you. Next is, was it Ms. Causey or Ms. Mack? Sorry, Ms. Mack, please go ahead.
Mr. Thomas.
No, I'm sorry, was it, who was next? No? Okay, then you can go ahead, Ms. Mack.
I find it very, very concerning that on Slide 16, we present schools that we will have to defer significant changes, and when I look down the list, I too learned a lot since the last meeting, and I'll speak to certain schools. We're showing West Town Elementary School as a school that we would have to defer renovation projects beyond 15 years. West Town Elementary School is a relatively new school. Catonville Elementary School was a new school the same year. Lansdowne Elementary School has been a new school since I've been on the board. Woodlawn High School had a massive renovation that I'm not even sure we've, you know, totally finished yet. Then when I look in the southeast area, Dundalk Elementary School is new, Colgate Elementary School is new, Berkshire Elementary School is new, Pikesville High School just had a massive renovation that Ms. Pasteur has spoken to and that I have been to, and I agree that it's a very nice one. I think it's very misleading to the public and even to board members to say that these schools that are new are going to need significant dollars that will have to be deferred if we approve Delaney and Towson. And I'd just like to say that growing up, I was always told by my parents to never throw good money after bad and to never settle. I strongly believe if we settle for renovations at Delaney and Towson, we are truly throwing good money after bad, but more importantly, we are setting a precedent, and you spoke to that, Mr. Dixitt, but I'm going to spin it a little bit. We are setting a precedent for all schools that renovations will suffice, when in fact, new schools may indeed be warranted, not just for Delaney and Towson, but many schools in our county. So, I will not be voting for the my I-Pass recommendations.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Jones. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I have a question for the amendment, Ms. Hen. Why just Delaney and Towson High School? There were 15 total premium projects that were recommended, and choosing two of the premium projects to prioritize, that to me does not seem like an equitable distribution of funds. Choosing only Delaney and Towson High School to prioritize in this thing, why aren't we not just simply prioritizing all of the premium projects that are recommended? So, that's my question for you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Yes, please do.
So, there were three high school projects that were prioritized by the Sage High School Capacity Study in dire need of replacement, Lansdowne, Towson, and Delaney, as being most in dire need of replacement. So, those are the three that Lansdowne is being replaced. Delaney and Towson were recommended by the Sage Study for replacement. It's part of the Educational Facilities Master Plan, or EFMP, if you're taking notes, as well as our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which lists that those three would be replaced. They list those three projects as the last projects of the current capital cycle, which is interesting because the my I-Pass drew the line arbitrarily after Lansdowne and lumped the Delaney and Towson projects in with the my I-Pass High School Study, and decided to draw the line after Lansdowne, which was an interesting choice, because prior to that, Delaney and Towson were scheduled for replacement at the board's approval to be replaced in addition to Lansdowne.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Dixitt, or Dr. Scriven, correct? Okay. If we had to choose two of these premium projects to prioritize over all of the others, would you choose Delaney and Towson High School as the two to prioritize?
So, this is not our call. My I-Pass has been prepared by an independent company, and this is their recommendation. So, there's a lot of misinformation here, and I didn't want to comment, but with Dr. Williams' approval, I'd like to answer some of the concerns here. So, when they use term renovation, they do not mean all renovation. There are systems in the building that require replacement within 15 years. So, West Towson Elementary School that you just mentioned, if it's 10, 11, 12 years old, within 15 years, there'll be systems that will need replacement. There may be, there may be additions needed, like for Dundalk High School, it is less than 15 years old, addition is already needed. So, what they are saying is, my I-Pass, that within 15 years, you'll need an addition, renovation of a system, replacement of a roof, replacement of a chiller. That's what they are saying. And if we don't do that, then 15, 20 years after that, we'll be in the same box as we are right now. So, we need a system that replaces building or building systems or technology update or roof. So, that needs to be considered. I don't know if I answered your question or not, but if we need more information, we have Paul Mills, I think online from my I-Pass, and he can answer some of those questions.
Okay, I think that will suffice. And so, another question is, there were 41 projects that were possibly deferred if we did Delaney and Towson. Looking at these projects, Chesapeake High School, which is 44 years old, almost aging and old, received a renovation 18 years ago, so that means they would go another 15 years without receiving any type of renovation. Milford Mill Academy, which is 72 years old, the same age as Towson, has not received a replacement, they received a renovation costing $38 million. Franklin High School, which is 61 years old, older than Delaney High School, has not received a project in 21 years. Pikesville High School, which is 57 years old, the same age as Delaney High School, did not receive a replacement, it received a renovation costing $49 million. Hareford High School, which is older than Delaney High School, received not a replacement, but a renovation. Carver High School is the only high school on the Excel sheet that I believe Ms. Causey and Ms. Hen, you sent out to the board members before, that was created by the two of you, that actually was, actually received any sort of replacement school. And there are two more high schools here, and 33 other elementary, middle, and additional schools, that would not receive any type of funding in the next 15 years with, by replacing Delaney and Towson High School. And so, I just don't understand how we could accept that with Mr. Dixitt, with what Mr. Dixitt just said about how these, over the next 15 years, these schools are going to be starting to get worse, then I just don't understand how we could not prioritize these schools along with Delaney and Towson.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and next, it looks like, oh, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, skipped around.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. First of all, thank you, Mr. Dixitt, for the presentation, for emphasizing that the my I-Pass was done by an independent architectural firm for $1.2 million that was commissioned by the county. The feasibility was done by another architectural firm, again, independently. BCPS had nothing to do with it, you're just a messenger. When I hear, I'm looking at schools that will not be touched, in the southeast, Middlebrook Elementary School, 67 years before it will be touched. Bear Creek Elementary School, 52 years. Edmondson Heights, Western Tech, 39 years before they've even touched. And like Mr. Thomas said, Millbrook is a 71-year-old school, and I only see a roof replacement. Do members of these board, and it's buy a new house and then don't do any improvements on it. You need roofs, you need boilers, especially a school that you have hundreds of children stomping through. You are going to have operation and maintenance costs. And as a civil engineer and somebody that actually does capital projects, I'm appalled to hear that statement that every school should not be looked at. That's exactly what a capital project does. You look at everything equitably, 175 schools, and that goes against our very own board policy of equity. We can't just look at two schools. One would think, we're sitting in here with just two schools in there, and nobody's saying that we should not give Towson or Delaney a new school, but what about Sparrow's Point? What's going to happen to Sparrow's Point? What's going to happen to Perry Hall High School that needs a renovation? I don't hear anything about it. What's going to happen to the new northeast high school that is severely needed? Well, how is that going to impact these changes that this board wants to make? And to me, it's, I'm kind of shocked at how we're not willing to listen, even though you're looking at the numbers, you don't want to listen to the numbers. So, if you could see what, if you could tell the board again, for the 50th time, what the impacts are going to be to the other schools? Thank you.
So, one of the things that needs to be emphasized, that money is finite, fiscal resources are finite. If they were unlimited resources, every school will be replaced. So, that's the reality that needs to sink in, in everybody's mind.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Pasteur, and then Dr. Hager, then Coon, then, I'm going around, she just raised her hand, you guys already added up, I'm trying to keep order. Ms. Pasteur.
All right. Thank you. We've been told not to process, we're not voting on my I-Pass, we're voting on this budget that we have been given. And so, as I looked, and I sat through all, you know, I sat through all of my I-Pass, except one that just, okay, except one. But as I look at this list, I process sort of differently. I look at, as someone mentioned earlier, I look at feeder patterns. Some of our schools can, children who are starting now can go through elementary, middle, and high, just looking at this list here, and they will go from one school to the next, and they will have issues with heating concerns, air concerns, roofs leaking, and as we hear all the time about what scores look like. So, we're telling children- So we're telling children, I'm going to deal with just the message of what we're giving children in terms of how important they are or they are not. And these on this list on which we're voting are here and now issues. These are not 15 to 16 years later. We are talking here and now issues. I would love for those two schools to get new buildings. We don't, we haven't even gotten to the Sparrows Points or the Millbrooks, where I'm standing inside of the building and it was raining inside and raining outside. It doesn't appear on a list yet. So I get it. I want those two schools to be new and wonderful and fresh, but I want all of these children to feel less than in disenfranchised beings who are getting nothing. And we talked about the instruction. All of it goes together.
That's time.
Morality.
Thank you, Ms. Pastore. Next is Dr. Hager, and then Mr. Coon.
Thank you. I have a question. In the county capital budget request, we did ask, there was a request for $500,000 for Delaney and $1.5 million for Towson for planning. If we are to adopt the state budget as proposed tonight, will that money then go to planning or renovation or addition in those two schools right away?
So the $500,000 or $1 million, whatever it's in there, that was for the preliminary site study. It was not even design money. It was preliminary site study. The design cost is in the range of $5, $6, $8 million. Design cost is generally approved once we know what we want to do with it. So for Towson and Delaney, scope of work has not been finalized.
Okay. So but is that money enough to get it started towards the renovation or addition? If that decision is what's made, could we at least use it to get it jump-started?
So that money was strictly for site analysis. That was not for design.
Okay. All right. And then my comment is actually very similar to Ms. Pastore's. I truly do, I would love to see Towson and Delaney families get a new school. However, I, some of Ms. Joes feel that, you know, the My I Pass study is an external, unbiased, third-party initiated study, and just because we don't agree with the findings of a research study doesn't mean that they're not valid. And so I do plan to follow the guidelines of the My I Pass as we, it was just done. So I feel like this year especially is the year to kind of jumpstart and follow the My I Pass direction. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Coon.
So, Mr. Dixitt, in your presentation on page 13, I believe it is, you compare a $60 million renovation and a $120 million replacement. We have the feasibility studies for both Delaney and Towson, and the renovation cost for Towson is $131 million, and it's $10 million more for a new school. So please explain to me how the math works, because this is ridiculous. This doesn't make any sense to me at all from what I'm seeing here that you're showing. And are you going to cut that cost in half and spend half of that on a renovation for Towson? I'm just, I'm kind of shocked because when I see a $10 million difference, which is 7%, which is within what you guys always ask for, the 10% management discretion for cost overruns and stuff, it's practically paying for a new high school. So I'm just shocked that we're even having this conversation when we're talking about $10 million, which is 7% of the spend. Please explain it to me. I'm shocked here.
That's a very good question. That's a very good question, and let me try to explain that to you. New schools cost more money than renovating a school. There's no question about that, okay? The purpose of renovation and or new school both is to meet the requirements of educational program and to make sure that building is providing 21st century learning environment and meets all life, health, and safety codes. So a renovated school, in terms of performance of building, in terms of meeting requirement educational program, will be identical, not the same, will be identical to a new building, but it'll be somewhat less than a new building in cost. What the feasibility study that you see is based on state requirement that you do a feasibility study of renovating exactly the same standard as new school in terms of space. So they compare as close as possible apple to apple. When we renovate a school, we try to fit the educational program in a creative, in a creative manner to manage cost and have the building ready to meet the educational program. The best way to communicate that example is if you look at Pikesville High School, that is a renovation addition project that was done at less than half the cost of a new building. If you look at school for the arts or at Dundalk Senior High School, that's a new school. So a new school, new building is designed from scratch and has elements of the new building. Pikesville High School is in no way inferior in terms of.
I'm sorry, I'm not talking about what we're going to get. I'm literally talking about the numbers.
So the same concept.
It's less than $10 million difference.
The same concept will apply here. Architects and engineers will look at the building, find a creative solution to fit the educational program and meet all the building requirements.
So are you telling me that it's not going to cost $131 million to do the renovation?
That's our anticipation is going to be a lot less than $130 million.
But all we have is the feasibility study to judge. So when I'm sitting here trying to make this judgment, and we're arguing about money here and resources, that's what we're doing, because there's never enough.
Yes.
But with what we've been provided and we paid money for, it's showing that to build those two schools combined, the difference is around $26 million, maybe $29 million for two brand-new schools versus renovation.
So that's the clarification I'm trying to provide. The purpose of feasibility study is to get state support, state funding, and state indicates that they will support a replacement if you can prove it is more cost-effective to do that. That is the only purpose of feasibility study. Let me repeat it. If I didn't communicate, I'll try it one more time. The purpose of the feasibility study is to convince state, meet their requirements. They have given you the format for feasibility study, an independent architect, they do that. And if you convince them that it is more cost-effective to build a new school, state will participate. If you do not convince them, then they are likely to participate only to the extent of renovation and not replacement. Did I communicate?
I've heard what you've said multiple times. The challenge is, we're talking about money here.
That's time.
And that's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Ms. Kozie has a question, a comment?
Thank you. Mr. Dixitt, in looking at Anne Randall County Public Schools construction, they have laid out this. There are some projects that do not require feasibility studies. So is it that Lansdown submitted a feasibility study, or was there a waiver that was applied for in Lansdown's case?
That's another good question. So if we decide to renovate a project, we do not need feasibility study to meet the state requirement. If we decide that we are going to replace a building and want full state participation, then the state requires a feasibility study. So Lansdown School, for the first time, when we were doing only renovation, we did not do a feasibility study. We did a scope of work analysis. When we applied for a replacement, we did a feasibility study, and that proved it is more cost-effective in terms of 40-year life cycle costing to replace the building.
So the Lansdown feasibility study was submitted to the IAC, or a waiver was requested from the IAC?
No, it was submitted to the IAC. Let me make sure that Mr. Plaid confirms it. Yes?
Thank you. Also, in looking through all of the information, again, we only got the feasibility studies for Delaney and Towson last night. And in reviewing the videos where there was a lot of discussion about apple to apple, what I did is I created a spreadsheet and actually showed it apple to apple, and I'll actually be happy to share that if you want to hand that to Mr. Dixitt and Dr. Scriven, where for some reason the Lansdown High School replacement option that was supported had a lower total building gross square feet. So that is what contributed to its lower cost. And if I, if you'll follow in my blue numbers and board members, I handed this spreadsheet out to everybody, you'll see that if it is made to be apples to apples, that in fact the Towson High replacement is less than the recommended option one. The price was only inflated because of the square feet being inflated. So if in fact the ed specs were all fulfilled, which I expect they were with the money that was spent on that feasibility study with 263,000 square feet, that doing the replacement with 2,000, 263,000, 086 feet would also meet the ed specs. And in that case, the total Towson High replacement is only 384,481,773. So in fact, as Mr. Bob Gurrell said, Director of the Interagency Commission for School Construction, "If there is consideration for a new school, it must be because it will be more affordable to maintain and renovate an existing one." Thank you. Ms. Pastore finished, so I'm going to finish.
No, that's time. I alerted Ms. Pastore of her time.
Requires a lot of.
That is time, Ms. Kozie. That is time. I would ask board members to respect the time.
Make sure that I understand it. The $500,000 that's scheduled for the southeast area analysis is not on there, on this, because that's not state money that's going to pay for.
You're absolutely correct.
And so that money's already been appropriated for that?
Yes, that money is already there.
So we can expect that RFP to go out sometime relatively soon and go from there?
Absolutely right.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Offerman.
Yes, Mr. Offerman. Please go ahead.
Mr. Dixitt, while I've just reviewed, having just gotten the documents very, very recently, what is the time of both those renovations for Towson and Delaney versus the time to build new schools?
So that's a good question. Renovation of that size of school have typically taken two summers, but I cannot tell you exact time until the contract documents or design is complete. But in case of Woodlawn and Patafsco, it took two summers to complete it. In case of a new building, it may take four summers to complete it. So time will be almost half in case of renovation. Had we done Delaney's renovation in the last go-around like we did for Patafsco and Woodlawn, Delaney's renovation would have been completed last year. Did I answer your question?
No, not exactly, because I, and perhaps, not perhaps, perhaps, I didn't read it correctly. I believe that the recommended option had a 54-month timeframe for the renovation. And if I'm in error, please, 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 please correct me.
Mr. Offerman, you're correct. The feasibility says 56 months for the recommended option one.
But the renovation that'll be done that is recommended under My I Pass, it will not be at the level that feasibility study has included in.
Well, I, my, my.
Excuse me, please. Ms. Offerman, let Mr. Offerman finish and let Mr. Dixitt respond. Mr. Offerman, if you could please repeat again, because there's a lot of talking going on.
I would question, or, you know, I guess one of my major questions is basically, how can I be sure if it will not be four years and eight months?
So the level of renovation that My I Pass has included in this study will not take 54 months. It will take two summers. The level of renovation that is included in feasibility study, so we are always mixing two documents with two different purposes. Those two documents are not the same document. We are talking about managed, prioritized renovation that is included in My I Pass. That is not as detailed as the feasibility study is considering to meet state requirements.
So what you're saying is that, excuse me, let me just rephrase this. You're saying that the information we're getting in the feasibility study is not necessarily correct. Is that correct?
No. No, it is correct for the purpose it is prepared. Feasibility study is for state participation, and the state is saying that if you do renovation with meeting exactly the same kind of space, same kind of program requirement as a new school. So those are two different documents for two different purposes. But the end game is, the end game is that the renovation that'll be done, it'll meet all building requirement and it'll be, it will meet all educational requirements.
Are you finished, Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, I think everyone is out of time. Did you have more time?
I don't know, but I just had a brief.
Okay, yes. Because I think, does Ms. Hen still have time? She does. Okay, please go ahead.
So, Mr. Dixitt, then, the renovation that we're approving, if we approve it on the capital request, is not the renovation option that's described in the feasibility study?
The total scope, yeah, it is definitely not as extensive as it is in feasibility study, but it'll meet the requirement to have the educational program.
We have no idea what we're approving. No dollar amounts associated with it. And we have no idea whether it'll meet Towson and Delaney's requirements, because we have no information on it. So we're being asked to approve something, we have no idea what it entails.
So any project that you are approving, you have no idea because the design is not complete. You will get the idea when the design is complete. And design is complete once the educational program is prepared and once the architect completes his design.
And that's always the case.
And that's always the case.
So even though the board's previously approved replacements.
So we are not treating any building differently. We are not treating any building differently than the other. So let's try to manage misinformation and confusion. These buildings will not be treated.
No confusion that the board's already decided these schools need replacements, and now you're telling us to approve something we have no idea.
That's time, Ms. Hen.
That meets no needs.
That's time. So if I could talk, because I haven't spoken yet, and I believe everybody is out of time, I would just ask, one, because there's a lot of misinformation and confusion and numbers being thrown around, and everybody's an architect and an engineer and a status, statistician and everything like that. But I deal in facts, and what I understand, I want to make sure that I have the timeline correct, because I know when we first came here, it was approved, and Delaney and Towson were footnotes. Was, am I correct? That was put on there by the previous board?
They were not footnotes.
Excuse me, I'm not speaking to you, and please don't interrupt me.
I'm not interrupting, I'm providing an answer.
So I, excuse me. You are out of order, and do not interrupt me again. Please put my time back. What time I have left, please replace that. And I will ask board members, we just did a civility code where we respect each other. I am questioning staff. I am not speaking to you. If I were speaking to you, I would address you. Do not interrupt me again. I appreciate that you were on the previous board and that you were here, but do not interrupt me again. It is most inappropriate. If you could replace my time back, please, because I was interrupted, and I have as much right as anyone else in this room to ask staff, and I did not interrupt anyone, and I take offense to that. Now, if I may continue. When we first came to the board in 2018, we were either all elected or appointed, some were returning, some were new. I'm questioning was, were they footnotes when we first saw, I guess, as some are referring to it as the list? Was it a, was Delaney and Towson footnotes?
So I will read the footnote to you from 2021 submission, and I'll read the footnote to you from 2020.
Well, you don't, you don't have to, because I.
The footnote is, no, it's very simple with.
Sure, go ahead.
The footnote is that the order in which Delaney and Towson are listed reflects the priority established by the board. The board expects the final prioritization. Final prioritization. The board expects the final prioritization of these and other projects to be determined after recommendation from my I-Pass.
Okay.
So board requested independent study. Board agreed that final priority will be decided by that independent study.
Okay.
Which is what we are trying to do here.
And yes, correct. And that is what I wanted to understand, because there are statements out here saying that the board has always approved it, always approved it. And I recall it being a footnote, then I recall a motion being made to have Delaney and Towson prioritized higher on the list to be taken out of footnote status. Is that correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. Then...
The priority was supposed to be decided by this study.
By the study, by the my I-Pass study.
By the study.
Okay. I just wanted to break it down and be very simple for those like me who are not engineers or architects. So that's number two. Then number three, my question is, is once that was done, then was, I believe there was a motion that was made, I'm not sure by who, but to then have Delaney and Towson moved up on the list, and that's how they became number 16 or 17 or 18, I believe, I'm not quite sure. And then after that, then it was also, I believe, Mr. Offerman added on, I believe it was Lansdowne, or I'm not really sure. But that's the trajectory, and that's how I remember it. So when I hear that they've always been on the list, then I remember it was a step to get there. But my question is, and I think you should keep the slide up of those 41 schools that are up there, because those schools are in all of our districts and all of our areas. And I think board members should remember that and be aware of that. And I know board members like to go to school visits, but some of these schools were built back in 1962, '64. It looks like Stone Lee Elementary School was built in 1930. And when you're out there and you're visiting and you're going to schools and you're talking, explain to the teachers, to the parents, to the kids why their schools aren't going to be developed for the next 15 years. I think that's very important, and I think you should keep that slide up so that board members can be reminded of that. Thank you. Was there anybody that had any time to speak? Mr. Mercedes?
I did.
You do?
Mr. McMillian has a minute fifty.
Would you like to speak, Mr. Millian?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I think we're all out of time, myself included. So I guess it would be appropriate to take a vote. We don't yield time. No, we don't yield time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a point of inquiry. Having been on the board in 2017, when I made the motion, which was seconded by Ms. Hen, to have Towson and Delaney added to the state capital request in September of 2017, in priority order. And I would ask Dr. Scrivens or other staff, they can go into board docs, and they can find that document, and they can provide it to you. I am very concerned when there is not facts that are given...
That's not an inquiry. Now you're making a statement.
Especially to the board...
Are you asking an inquiry? Are you making a statement? What is your question?
My inquiry is, Mr. Mercedes, if the board members agree to have one more minute, there was a very important point about the Built to Learn Act...
That's not an inquiry, Ms...
That's an inquiry that I have to Mr...
We need to take a vote on this.
Excuse me, I would like to ask Mr. Mercedes...
We need to take a vote on this. You're out of time, Ms. Causey. Please, you're out of time.
I'm sorry.
We need to take a vote on the motion and on the amendment to the motion, so that we can move forward and process this motion on the floor.
Madam Chair...
You asked for an inquiry. This is now...
Yes, my inquiry is, I'm asking Mr. Mercedes if the board members agree to have one minute of questions, because I'm concerned about some of the things that were stated that need to be clarified.
I feel that we, I feel that it's time for us to take a vote. I feel that we've talked about this, and more talking about it is, I think that we have the information. They've answered our questions. We've all asked questions, and we need to take a vote.
So Madam Chair, you're not going to let the board counsel respond to my point of inquiry?
You're out of time, Ms. Causey. We're going to take a vote.
I know I'm out of time, but I...
Ms. Goover, if we could do a roll call vote, please, on, and I can restate the motion as amended, because it was emailed over to me. It says, it was a motion that was made by Ms. Jost. It says, "Motion to approve the fiscal year 23 state capital budget request as presented in Exhibit N," and then it was amended by Ms. Hen. And I will read again the amendment, because there's been quite a bit of conversation. "I move to amend fiscal year 2023 state capital budget request by updating priority nine, Towson High School, such that the project is replacement school, 1,688 seats, and inserting a new row as priority 10, School Towson High, Project Replacement School, 1,688 seats. Type of approval: F funding. Total state funding share: 66,532,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023: 66,522,000. And updating current priority 10, School Delaney High, such that the project is replacement school, 2,070 seats, and inserting a new row as priority 11, Delaney High School, Project Replacement School, 2,070 seats. Types of, type of approval: F funding. Total state funding share: 73,122,000. State funding request fiscal year 2023: 73,122,000. And incrementing the remaining current rows 11-36 accordingly." And it was seconded by Ms. Causey. So if we could do a roll call vote, Ms. Goover, please.
Madam Chair, point of clarity, are we voting on the amendment?
So yes, we're voting on the amendment. Sorry.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Point of order. Mr. McMillian?
No.
Ms. Jost?
No.
Madam Chair, when we start the roll call vote again, please?
I'm sorry, we're in the middle of the roll call vote. What is the problem?
Mr. Thomas was distracting.
Oh. I don't think it was distracting, but we may start again. Go ahead.
Start again.
That's fine.
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
No.
Ms. Jost?
No.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pastor?
No.
Dr. Hager?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Favor is six.
And how many did it need to pass? Six?
Correct.
Yes, because the student members in voting, correct. Okay. So now we'll vote on the motion as amended. And I read it already. I don't think I need to read it again, though. I hope everybody, because I've read it. So now we're voting on the motion as amended. Ms. Goover, yes, sorry.
Ms. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Causey?
Yes.
Ms. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. McMillian?
Yes.
Ms. Jost?
Yes.
Ms. Hen?
Yes.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
We're in the middle of the vote.
Okay.
Mr. Offerman?
Yes.
Ms. Pastor?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. Point of parliamentary inquiry. I believe that I had a, I believe as student member in the board, I had the right to vote on the amendment of the budget, but just not the capital budget request.
No. Mr. Mercedes, if you could weigh in and let him...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we had checked some. Okay, so the motion passes as amended. All right. Now we will go to... Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the...
Madam Chair, I do want to recognize the team for presenting information and enduring the Q and A and responding to the questions. So to Mr. Dixitt and Dr. Scriven, for those who've never sat down in that table, I'm sorry, I would like to get all board members' attention at this time.
Sorry.
I do want to recognize Mr. Dixitt and Dr. Scriven for responding to your questions and the firing of the questions multiple times. If you've never sat at that table, you don't know how it feels to respond to questions from board members. I do want to acknowledge Mr. Dixitt with his 52 years of service of this work. And acknowledge, this is not the work of Baltimore County Public Schools, but independent contractors to provide information. So on behalf of Team DCPS, Mr. Dixitt and team, Mr. Plate, Dr. Scriven, thank you for your service. And again, thank you for sitting at that hot seat and responding to those questions and providing facts. That's all, you were providing facts. And I appreciate the board, again, having this lengthy discussion, and I appreciate the civility code, that sometimes your questions can be a little biting, especially when you're sitting at that table. So I do want to acknowledge that I appreciate your tenacity to endure and to respond and looking at the whole. But again, this decision was up to this board in terms of what to do and to move forward. This is not a representation of the staff, especially Mr. Dixitt, who has been given 52 years of service in this county. So that's all I have to say at this time. Thank you.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for a two-minute recess so we could use the facilities?
A two-minute recess? I'm not certain. I usually like for us just to go through and finish, but certainly. Do I have a motion to go into recess?
So moved, room.
Is there a second?
Second, Hen.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call? Nope. Okay, we'll just go into recess for five minutes.
I'm worth the difference. I'd like Dixitt, but we get one study. I don't know if you heard that part. He said renovation only takes two summers.
I hope it makes sense to me.
That's bullshit. That's bullshit.
That's bullshit.
As I go through this presentation this evening, I hope that you will not view the report as some of the media outlets has described it as scathing or a reflection of individuals' leadership, but rather a deep dive into the issues and the roadblocks, some dating back numerous years, related to BCPS's systems, procedures, and processes. The report should be viewed as just one of many tools that BCPS can use to continue moving the school system forward and achieving the goals set forth in their strategic plan, the compass. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about the overview of the methodology. This work started in March. It took six months to complete. There are two public work LLC teams. The one that produced this report and a separate team that evaluated the county government operations. The county executive is not singling out BCPS. He has asked for a deep dive into the Baltimore County Government efficiency and effectiveness as well. So be on the lookout for that report, which will be released in the near future. The team that I led for this report consisted of 14 team members that are highly skilled in the areas they reviewed. All of us have been or still are K-12 educators. We've been teachers, principals, superintendents. We even have one member of our team who's been a commissioner of education in a couple of states. It's important to know that we did not make any of these recommendations based solely on one source of data, but rather multiple sources. As you can see from this slide, we interviewed 307 Baltimore County Public School staff at all levels of the organization. Dr. Williams agreed on the six peer school districts chosen for this comparative comparison study, mainly based on similar student enrollment and free and reduced lunch percentages. We analyzed well over 200 documents, and that's not including the ones from the peer school system. We conducted an anonymous survey open for two weeks, and 4,820 employees responded to the survey. That represents a 33.3% return rate, which is a pretty high return rate for most surveys. Our team hosted two tollgate meetings, and we call them tollgate meetings so that we allow time to stop and reflect and to allow the chiefs or the staff member who oversees the areas to review the draft report. And they provided us with both verbal and written feedback on the draft. Staff provided our team with any factual errors that they detected in the report, and all of those factual errors were corrected for this final report. 85% of the leadership reviewing the draft report were very supportive and welcoming of these findings and recommendations for improvement in their respective operational areas. In fact, some of the leaders shared with us they've already begun implementing some of the recommendations. Next slide, please. This slide provides you with just a snapshot of the survey results. Appendix A will provide you with the full details. As you can see, several of the areas of the review have a very high percentage of responses stating that that operational area needs either major or some improvement. The highest ratings went to custodial, grounds maintenance, and food services. Food services had the most favorable responses of all of the operational areas. It is important to note, however, that when the survey was conducted, three of the divisions, the curriculum and instruction, the research accountability and assessment, and the school climate and safety were not included in this survey. That was an add-on component of the study after the survey results were in. However, we did conduct numerous interviews and focus groups, and I'd be remiss if I didn't share with you that the majority of the staff interviewed had very high praise and respect for the services provided by the Division of Curriculum and Instruction. Next slide, please. One of my favorite authors is Stephen Covey, and he always says to begin with the end in mind. And the end game in this is your students. This efficiency report is all about and centered upon improving services for your students. We pulled these data points that you see in the slide below from a 2020 Baltimore County Public School report. And this is only one of many reports that show that student achievement and the school system needs to improve. That is why you're going to see a trend throughout this presentation and throughout the report, that recommendations that divert some of the resources from the top, from the central office, and place them where needed the most, the 175 Baltimore County Public Schools. Next slide, please. These are just a few tips for navigating this over 750-page report. If you click on the table of contents, there's hyperlinks that will take you directly to a specific chapter. There are nine chapters in the report, or it will take you to an appendices. There's a total of 54 commendations and 197 recommendations. Also helpful, you should know in Appendix G, it provides the reader with a list of all of the recommendations, what page number they're on in the report, and what tier level they are. By tier level, I mean that our team labeled these recommendations either Tier 1, Tier 2, or Tier 3. Tier 1 are the recommendations that our team believes have the highest priority, should have the highest priority. Tier 2 is important, but not the highest priority. And Tier 3 is the least important, but still should be implemented when time and funds are available. As you can see, 148 of 197 recommendations are considered to be Tier 1 or high priority. The media seemed to hone in on the recommendations that central office is top-heavy, and in many areas, it is. But HR is not one of them. As you can see from this slide, HR has the highest number of recommendations, 63. Many of these recommendations are adding staff, recommending to add staff to assist in the heavy workload that human resources requires. There are 22 commendations throughout the report related to educational programs and services. Many of these initiatives and programs delivered by the Curriculum and Instruction Department and DRAA and the School Climate and Safety deserve very high praise and should give bragging rights to BCPS. Next slide, please. Due to time limitations, I'm only going to be able to scratch the surface on our recommendations and commendations. I'll go through these fairly quickly, so we'll have enough time for question and answers. Baltimore County Public Schools has a comprehensive strategic planning process called the compass, their strategic plan. The Baltimore County Public School chiefs are commended for collaborating with the Baltimore County Government Director of Educational Partnerships to better coordinate services for students. Chapter 1 will give you several examples of some of the positive outcomes that have been provided by this partnership. The 2021 Baltimore County Public School Scholarship Loan Program, it's called "We Want You Back." It is a remarkable program and helps to support the BCPS graduates in preparing for professional careers in K-12 education. The Aspiring Leaders Program is also very well-designed and executed. The program prepares teachers for the demanding role of assistant principal. The Fiscal Services staff have demonstrated an exceptional commitment to the system, and they've worked tirelessly to address the devastating impacts of the ransomware attack that paralyzed almost every aspect of the system's financial operations. Next slide, please. Other commendations include the budget document shows very clear links to the strategic plan. You don't always find that in a school system's strategic plan. As well as the superintendent's goal, the most commendable best practice. The Department of IT Leadership and Staff are to be commended for their hours, effort, and recovery results from the ransomware attack. You'll find many more findings and recommendations in Chapter 4 on technology. The Baltimore County Government and BCPS have partnered, and you heard about this a little bit previously from Dr. Dixon in the previous presentation, with two critically important long-range facility planning studies, the Sage Report and the Canon Report, commonly called IPAT, My IPAT, that provides necessary information for determining the needs and framework for facility improvement. Also, the school system's plan for energy management and sustainability is outstanding. We have not seen quite an outstanding energy management plan in the numerous school systems that we have reviewed. To be very proud of it has led to substantial energy conservation and also quite a bit of savings. Next slide, please. In an effort to grow your own, you've initiated a program in the Transportation Department where they will provide tools for less experienced mechanics and technicians who typically do not yet possess the full range of tools required to carry out their duties. Also, the Office of Transportation has developed a school bus safety initiative to meet safety and overall operational efficiency goals. This initiative has been a work in progress for over a year. You may have noted in one of my previous slides that food services got the highest rating overall in our survey. The Office of Food and Nutrition Services' response to COVID-19 was exceptional, heroic, and serves as a model for other school districts in feeding students during a lockdown event. Also, the Office of Food and Nutrition is commended for maintaining exemplary professional development process that results in very, very well-trained employees and opportunities for a future career path. Next slide, please. Another department of high praise is between the partnership between the school system and Baltimore County Government with regard to its School Resource Officer Program. Very high ratings throughout our interviews and throughout the survey with regard to the School Resource Officer Program. The Division of Research Accountability and Assessment is commended for producing a wide array of dashboards and research reports that are accessible through the BCPS website. We commend your athletic program. It's well-organized. It's well-coordinated. The Office of the Deputy General Counsel is commended for their knowledge and expertise of special education law and related litigation and for having the foresight to hire a special education attorney who supports and guides the school system in the effective implementation of special education law. Next slide, please. Another example of excellent shared services with county government is your Health Services Unit. They're commended for outstanding clinical leadership during this pandemic response and for their exemplary collaboration with the Baltimore County Department of Health and for the provision of vaccination, outbreak management response, and outbreak management response, and COVID testing. The Office of Title I is commended for the establishment of a change management process. BCPS is also commended for updating and adopting a teaching and learning framework that provides specific strategies to support and improve daily classroom instructional practice. The teachers that we had focus groups with had very high remarks with regard to this new adopted teaching and learning framework that provided them some specific strategies that they can use to improve their teaching in the classroom. The school system is also commended for its residency model to assist struggling schools with targeted professional development and improved teaching and learning strategies. This model provides schools with central office expertise in identified areas of need in the school. Next slide, please. Recommendations. The majority of the recommendations fall into five common themes across all of the chapters: the need for central office restructuring, the lack of accountability and transparency, unsatisfactory work environment and low employee morale, lack of clear communications, and the need for more shared services opportunities with BC government and other stakeholders. Next slide, please. There are over 60 recommendations that target the need for streamlining the organization, realigning reporting structures, and in some cases, adding critical positions where services to schools are lacking. The central office executive-level organizational structure is neither efficient nor effective, has a broad span of control that exceeds best practices, and it should be reorganized and reducing the number of direct reports to Superintendent Williams from 11 direct reports to seven. This will provide Superintendent Williams with the much-needed time and energy to devote to improve student achievement efforts and lifting the spirits and morale of staff. It will also allow him an opportunity to explore more with ways that his team can partner with other outside entities such as Baltimore County Government and other stakeholders and groups. The four current direct reports to the superintendent that we believe should remain are the general counsel, the chief of staff, the chief of human resources, the chief academic officer. We are, however, proposing some new positions, and those would be a deputy superintendent to provide a second-in-command, a chief financial officer, leading the Division of Fiscal Services. This position is a conversion of the position of the Executive Director of Fiscal Services. Also, the chief information officer, leading the Division of IT. Next slide, please. It's important to note also in Appendix D, our team has provided you with some sample job descriptions of these new positions that we're recommending, so that will be helpful when and if you decide to hire those positions. This slide shows the overall reorganization recommendation with seven direct reports to the superintendent. A deputy superintendent who's not only second-in-command, but would also provide oversight of a Department of Schools rather than being led by the current three community superintendents. This structure has shifted some of the other divisions and departments over to the responsibility of the chief academic officer. Because what our team found, that many departments that should be collaborating with the curriculum and instruction division to provide service to schools are actually working in silos, and it wasn't being, it's not a team effort. We have reorganized to make pull these like entities together under one umbrella, so that there's more collaboration, less silos. You can learn a lot more about this reorganization in Recommendation One in Chapter One. Next slide, please. The use of contracted services to supply building service workers is more costly than hiring FTEs. The facilities department should eliminate the contracted services for building service workers and fully staff the allocated budgeted FTE building service workers. That's in Chapter Five. In Chapter Eight, we believe that the BCPS, the Department of Special Ed, have a systemic, we don't believe it, we know it, they have a systemic compliance issue that has warranted a need intervention by the Maryland State Department of Education. The ongoing lack of compliance is contributing to the increase of non-public placements, which to date is costing your school system over $48 million. Therefore, our team recommends that the Department of Special Ed design a compliant infrastructure to serve students with special needs within Baltimore County Public Schools. Next, we'll move to the ESOL program. It is ineffective and inefficient at the secondary school level, and it's causing many parents to withdraw their child from ESOL services. Currently, secondary students are being bused to various schools for ESOL services as opposed to serving them in their home schools. This has caused a multitude of issues, including long bus rides, students having to leave their own communities, difficulty in participating in extracurricular activities. And like the HR department, ESOL is another area in central office that we found is understaffed, and they're unable to provide the most efficient services as they are currently staffed. So we're recommending that they establish an ESOL task force to create a phased-in approach to bring secondary ESOL programs back into the student home. Next slide, please. The next theme is lack of accountability and transparency. There's over 17 recommendations related to this theme. Many departments in the school system do not use KPIs, key performance indicators.
Sorry, Dr. Cox, you're going out a little bit. You're going in and out.
Okay, let me see if I can turn up the volume a little bit.
That sounds much better.
Is that better?
Yes.
Many departments and the division do not use key performance indicators. That is a very common use of KPIs in high-performing districts. And we did not see too many divisions and departments using key performance indicators to measure and understand the performance and the health of their units, and to make data-driven decisions. I'd like to move to the next slide, please. We're moving on to some school board operation recommendations. I'd like to share with you one quote that kind of stands out in my mind regarding the board and the superintendent. One interviewee stated, "Superintendent Williams is on a road trip, and he has 12 different GPSs telling him where they think he should go." And I personally interviewed each and every one of you as board members, and Christian, the student board member, and individually, you have one of the most talented and diverse boards that I've ever encountered in the business of doing this. And I've encountered many boards in my career. The passion that you all have to help, to want to help BCPS children be their best is undoubtedly evident when individually speaking to each of you. As a group, however, this board does not function effectively. It's kind of similar, I'd like to liken it to a major league team recruiting the finest players, only to come up with a losing season. I asked questions, why? Why is there such discord? And I was given multiple reasons, such as politics, the hybrid board model, racism, it's the rubber stampers versus the do-gooders, the ransomware attack, COVID, the lack of training. I could go on and on. Yes, maybe these are some reasons why the board has extremely long and contentious meetings. But board members, you must, you just must find a way to put all of these reasons aside and work together as one team for the benefit of Baltimore County Public School students. Chapter one shows strategies that other high-performing districts are using to show a united front as a stronger board. And you can see several of them on this slide. I'd like to go on to the next slide in essence of the time limitations. BCPS has a practice of appointing individuals, some individuals, to high-level leadership positions who are not highly qualified with specialty training in the aspects of their new responsibilities and without comprehensive direct experience in that specialty area. Our recommendation is the school system should expediently fill vacant leadership positions with permanent appointees who are highly qualified with specialized training and appropriate experience in those areas. The second bullet, key constituents and stakeholders lack confidence and trust in the budgeting and financial reporting of the school system. Interviews and reports with staff consistently question the transparency of the budgeting and financial reporting. The school system needs to build trust in its financial reporting by creating a plan to increase transparency in all phases of budget development and financial reporting. Our consultant that reviewed this area has provided you with some best practices to help you implement that recommendation. Also, the school system lacks board policy, superintendent rule, and a comprehensive and strategic plan for risk management. The ransomware attack of November 24th, 2020, that I'm sure will be forever in most of your minds, has been a disruptive and very costly to the school system, and it's all the more need for a comprehensive and strategic risk management strategy. The school system should develop a comprehensive strategy with a systemic approach that coordinates and aligns current practices and enlarges the scope to include threats that have not been adequately addressed. Also, the school system should hire a manager of risk management position to oversee these responsibilities. Next slide, please. There is a disconnect between the massive scope of data available for teachers and principals to use and the school's capacity to use this data properly. And I know from interviewing Ms. Pasture that this recommendation may ring very clear to home, close to home with her. We had a long discussion on the use of data in driving school decisions. There is a need to build capacity at the school site personnel to access data and to become proficient in the use of the data to improve teaching and learning. The school system should develop a stipend-based program to fund one staff member per school to serve as a data facilitator and a trainer of their colleagues in the area of data access and use of data. We were told in some of the interviews that data was scant. And when we went out and found it on the portal, granted, we had to do several clicks to get to it, there's a plethora of data out there. Schools need to be better informed on how to access it and to be given the tools with which to be able to analyze it to make good, solid data-driven decision makings and building their school improvement plans. There is a lack of accountability in holding principals and teachers accountable, responsible for implementing what are quite expensive, I might say, BCPS curriculum, with fidelity and for holding students accountable for taking regular unit assessments. The school system should require that all executive directors, those are the executive directors that the principals report to, participate in a minimum of a fortified day/summer boot camp and to attend the weekly academic team meetings to ensure that all principals are adequately informed and are held to high instructional leadership standards. Next slide, please. Theme three, the unsatisfactory work environment and the low employee morale. We heard numerous reasons for the low morale. The ones that rose to the top include COVID and the transition to remote learning, ransomware attack. Much of the data and the tools that a lot of blood, sweat, and tears of Baltimore County Public School staff built were lost. What a great blow. The lack of key person in central office truly understanding the needs and issues of the schools was a common theme. We also heard this numerous times, that there are last-minute communications sent out by central office with directives for principals and teachers to carry out with a lack of forethought, with a lack of appropriate resources and time for the school-level staff to successfully implement those directives. Next slide, please. BCPS has experienced substantial annual employee turnover for years. You'll see in our report distinct analysis with peer districts to show the high turnover rate. The school system should address the climate, the work environment, and morale of staff permeating the district which affects this turnover levels and the salary disparities compared with neighboring school systems. You can find details on that in Chapter Two, Recommendation 248. The survey results show that the teacher morale is not good. I'm sure that is no surprise. The survey also included opportunities for open-ended comments, and we received over 6,000 open-ended comments. The Board of Education and Superintendent should review the survey results. They're in Appendix A, and responses in order to fully understand, to internalize, and to accept the state of the district's climate and culture and morale, and develop a strategic and very tactical plan to address these issues. Please note that Public Works LLC redacted any comments that could identify a staff member or any comments that were overly caustic to individuals in leadership positions. BCPS also lacks appropriate incentive programs, which would help address the bus shortage, driver shortage issue. The school system should initiate recruitment and retention incentives to address the driver shortage. That's Chapter Six, Recommendation 65. Theme four, lack of clear communication. There's a pervasive theme throughout the central office, divisions, and schools that clear and timely communication in the school system is lacking. The survey results also show a high level of dissatisfaction with central office communication. Granted, the malware attack and issues resulting from COVID and the hybrid learning model has elevated these issues. However, there is a strong need to strengthen the communication from central office to each of the 175 schools. Next slide, please. Some examples in this theme that the school system does not have a sound stakeholder communication process. There's confusion, mistrust, lack of cohesion in the school system. And we recommend that they develop and implement a written strategic communication plan. And we've provided an example of one in Chapter One as a best practice. The conduct of the school board fosters an atmosphere of discord and unprofessionalism, which results in the division staff and the community lacking trust in its leadership. The board should adopt a civility policy. I heard mention of that previously earlier in the meeting. Attend Maryland Association of Board of Education Team Building Workshops. The board chair should hone in and complete more parliamentary procedure courses. And the board legal counsel should be required to earn a professional registered parliamentarian credential. These recommendations will help expedite your meetings and will also make sure that appropriate motions are made and the meeting moves along in an appropriate manner. Theme five, enhance shared services. There are some missed opportunities for the BCPS and the Baltimore County Government to collaborate and potentially share some services. to collaborate and potentially share some services for increased efficiency and effectiveness. Next slide, please. Some examples under this theme is that the two entities could be jointly bidding and some more aspects of their employee benefits program. Also, the two entities could conduct a more comprehensive IT needs assessment, both the county and the school system, to identify some resources, some areas of collaboration, and duplication of services. BCPS is not adequately staffed to deal with cybersecurity attacks. The school system should immediately supplement its IT network resources and explore the use of an external cybersecurity service provider. Also, the school system should engage the appropriate county government staff to create a shared services assessment team to review some possible savings related to fleet management, and that is, more details are provided in Chapter six, Recommendation 621. Next slide, please. So there are a total of 66 recommendations that have a fiscal impact. Chapter nine in the report details each of these recommendations. Public Works LLC identified a potential five-year net, I repeat, net savings of nearly 40 million if BCPS chooses to implement the recommendations. This is a conservative estimate. Some districts we have evaluated have accrued even more savings than specified in the report as a result of implementing the recommendations. Next slide, please. What are the next steps? The next step is that the school board and Superintendent Williams have an opportunity to use this report and findings and recommendations to transform the school system, its culture and climate, its operations, its academic program, to become more efficient and one of the higher performing school systems in the state of Maryland. Public Works LLC suggests that the school system hosts this report. We have placed it in an ADA and 504 compliant format. We request or that you post it on your website to allow all stakeholders an opportunity to access it. It is my understanding that one of the media outlets has already posted the report, and I know that it can also be found on the Baltimore County Government website as well. It is up to your leadership, your school system's leadership, to create a plan of action to implement the recommendations. We provided Superintendent Williams with a suggested implementation plan. It was submitted as an accompanying document to the full operational efficiency review report. The board must monitor the implementation rate on a regular basis. Perhaps a standing board agenda item for regular updates is in order. This report has a lot of facts, a lot of good recommendations. It should not sit on the shelf. It should be opened up on a regular basis, and a plan needs to be provided to how are you going to implement the recommendations? Now, some school systems, the finding is the finding, it's the facts. We got the facts from reviewing the documents and from interviewing staff, and all of the facts were verified by the leadership. So whether the school system chooses to implement the recommendation as stated, it's your decision. You can alter it if you need to, as long as it addresses the problem that's identified in the finding. Many of these recommendations can be implemented in school year 21, 22, and are cost neutral. Several of the recommendations have a significant fiscal impact and may need to begin implementation in the 22, 23 school year. So the next slide, I used to be a former high school debate teacher, and we always used to say we stand ready for cross-examination. And I say "we" because I do have with us the Public Works LLC CEO, Eric Schnur, who is also here with us tonight. So at this point, I would like to, I understand a previous comment was that I'm in the hot seat now, so please shoot some of your questions to me.
Certainly. Thank you for that, Dr. Cox, for your work and for the presentation, and I'm sure there are board members who have questions. I want to make sure that Ms. Scover, you said there were two board members that are on the phone? Okay, so I want to make sure because I can't see them. Mr. Offerman and Ms. Joz, did either of you have a question?
Yes, I have a question, actually, comment and question.
Okay, Mr. Offerman, do you have a comment or question? I guess not, okay. So if we could start with Ms. Joz, and then who in the room just raise the red divider up so I can write it down? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Joz.
Firstly, thank you, Dr. Cox, for your report, which you emphasize time and again, these are suggestions for Dr. Williams to implement. Having heard your report, one would, you know, not look at the scathing media reports. You have so much praise for IT, for food services, law offices. You had a comment on the budget and fiscal services, and I was wondering if that complains with board members, because our fiscal services have gotten lots of applause for good budgeting practices in the past two years. That's one, and was there any interaction with the chief of the audit office, which falls into the board's purview? And my third question here is also, like, let's get to the board, because you talk about the board micromanaging and going into operations, and I believe you've been watching the board meetings. If you could give some examples of how we do that, how we go into operations, just to emphasize, because I do believe you are correct, we do micromanage and we do go into operations. And since I was the one that made the comment, I will claim it, I was the one that stated that Dr. Williams unfortunately has 12 GPSs that he has to follow. He's driving, and everybody's telling him to go a different way, and so it's not fair to him. So if you could answer about the board's part of how we micromanage and get into operations? Thank you.
Okay, I believe it was a four-part question. I'll try to recall the first part, but we do give commendations to the business department for the many awards that they have earned over the years. So I think if you read the full report, you will see that we have commended them for them. I couldn't go over all of the commendations of the report. With regard to micromanagement, I think if you go to page, I'm going to pull this up on my computer to show you that there are several examples of micromanagement in the report.
I think it's on page 66.
Thank you. As you can see on page 66, some of the board requests or concerns, yeah, a board member created a metric data item and then posted several related and unrelated questions, each requiring staff attention, motion to receive a monthly report on the number of teacher vacancies and related data, creating another report, the number of students and grade levels and LPP magnet programs at a specific high school, a report on vehicle purchasing and status of planning for increased fuel efficiency. There's, I could provide you with other examples, these are just some that came out, and listening to some of the board member, some of the board meetings, and talking to some of the board members.
Thank you. I think it clarifies, because there's always the narrative that the school system is not answering questions, and you kind of independently come in and said, in fact, the board members are asking too many questions compared to a district of our size. I think there was a report that you said we had 136 questions compared to a similar district that asked about 12 questions. So we are asking questions, and we are taking time and resources away from student services that the staff members could be working on. Instead, we are inundating staff with questions.
That's time, Ms. Joz. The timer went off, so, thank you. Next, we have Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, and thank you very much, Dr. Cox, for this information. On page 19 of the report, Public Works cites that a school district in California implemented 94% of its recommendations, Nevada 95%, and a district in Virginia implemented 90%. In the district cited, who requested the audit and who paid for the audit? Do you have that information?
I certainly do, because I led each of those. I think if the focus of the question, is there a difference between the rate of implementation between school systems that hire us directly versus an outside entity such as the county executive hiring us, the average implementation rate is about the same. And sometimes it's even higher. Sometimes it's even higher when an outside entity, the implementation rate is even higher when an outside entity such as the county executive hires us to perform the work.
Thank you. On page 372, there's a statement that our comparisons found that BCPS students did not perform well academically. The bullets that follow that go on to cite deficiencies in all levels, elementary, middle, and high school. My specific question is, why then, on page 377, does Public Works recommend the addition of one executive director of middle schools only? Who would bring that same focus and effort to elementary schools and high schools? And it might be in there, and I might have missed it.
That's a very good question. Right now, you have nine, 10 executive directors, all covering elementary, middle, and high school, but the middle and the high school executive directors are combined, and talking with a lot of middle school staff and principals, they are not receiving as much attention and services as they would like, and therefore, we're adding another executive director to help fill that gap for assisting the middle schools.
So just to clarify, the high school, the high school people would either stay high school or become specifically middle school, just so everybody has a role at a grade level or a elementary, middle, or high school level? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then my last question is this. Page 62 provides a chart from NASB that states that effective school boards are data-driven, they embrace and monitor data, even when the information is negative, and use it to drive continuous improvement. In your work with school boards around the country, do you find this focus and use of data by school boards to be the norm or the exception?
Could you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
So you cite on page 62 that effective school boards are data-driven, they embrace and monitor data, even when the information is negative, and use it to drive continuous improvement. In your work with school boards around the country, do you find this focus and use of data by school boards to be the norm or the exception?
I think it's all over the map, to be quite honest with you. The majority of the school boards that we have worked with have processes and procedures in place to be data-driven. There is not a, there's really not a norm that I can share with you, because each school system is different.
Okay, and Mr. Brusades, how much time do I have? Oh, never mind. Thank you very much, Ms. Cox, Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay, it looks like we have Ms. Rowe and Ms. Pastore. Ms. Rowe, you can go ahead.
I noticed that in the report, you have the boards conducted meetings that could be described as, there was a research study that showed that board behavior is related to low student achievement scores, and one of the things that cited that leads to that is not being focused on student achievement. And I was wondering if you could provide examples for specifically how boards involve themselves directly in student achievement in a way that does not cross the operational boundary?
I think it's important for, at most board meetings, if not every board meeting, for the board to be kept updated on where you are in student achievement, what are the new initiatives being tried, which ones have failed, so that you are constantly being informed and your questions are being answered in a timely and regular manner.
Do other boards typically have a standing agenda item on their meetings for student achievement?
Yes, a lot of boards will have reports, they'll alternate schools, they have school reports on student achievement. Most boards do keep abreast of student achievement as the whole heart of the school system, and all of these other functions, facilities, food services, financial management, they're all to support school improvement, and that should be one of the focuses of your meetings.
Thank you.
Ms. Pastore?
Thank you. Dr. Cox, we did spend a lot of time talking about data, and it was wonderful. I do want to point out to the board that the one commendation came to our goals, or about our goals being aligned to the superintendent's budget, okay, and his plan. So please read it for those of you who thought we didn't have goals. And to that end, talking about being data-driven, those goals, if in this past year, things had been different in the system and in the state, we would have been able to do some of that measurement and taking a look at some of those things that talked about the progress of our students and us being more effective and how efficient. I am encouraged that we're going to see more of that in this next year with all of the things that are happening with our curriculum office, with our efficiency, whatever Dr. Williams decides to call it, and whatever, that that plan will all come together to that end. So I thank you for your presentation tonight, because it's positive, it's hopeful, and it's where we need to be, because if we look at this in the negative, we have the potential to decimate this system. If we're looking at it as a got-you moment, we can kill this system because we will kill further the morale, and therefore, we will kill the children. Dr. Williams and I have had this conversation about blueprint.
That's time.
How it all comes together. So thank you.
That's time. Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions? Yes, Mr. McMillian.
Dr. Cox, I'm curious, was central staff given the opportunity to look at a draft document?
Yes, they were given multiple times to look at the draft document. We provided them with the draft, they went over it line by line. I have a document that I sent them, that they put down the chapter number, the page number, the paragraph number, what they saw as an error, or did you take a look at this? We went over each page of the draft document to ensure that it is based on facts.
Okay, and I just, I want to point out to you that I received a text shortly that said this individual did not have the opportunity to look at a draft and did not have the opportunity to make corrections. So somewhere this information is, is a little, something's wrong with what I'm receiving and what you're saying. Thank you very much.
Dr. Scriven sat in on the majority of the meetings that we had, and I have documentation of everyone that we spoke to that oversees the area.
Okay, okay. So if I-
Food services. So I'm not sure where you're getting your information, but it is inaccurate.
Okay, the other person's going to say your information is inaccurate. Now, I'm just curious, if I conferred with you directly and I give you the information that I have, could you substantiate it or refute it or whatever on your end for me?
I'll give it my best shot.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll be in touch. Thank you. I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Clausy?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Cox, thank you for the presentation.
No, he can't hear you.
Thanks, there's a gremlin that just turned my mic up. So I just wanted to thank Dr. Cox and her team for this work, and I want to dovetail with Ms. Pastore and look at this as an opportunity to do better for our children. And I would like to say that, as Dr. Cox pointed out, there's a number of issues that have been the years in the making, if not longer. So this, where we are now is not any one's fault. There are things that maybe people could have done better along the way, but also in terms of the organization, we've been through a lot of transitions and there are a lot of positions that were changed kind of every other year or so. And I also want to say that there's, I can see, looking at this, that maybe it's distressing to some folks who are in certain positions, but I would wonder, Dr. Cox, if you could speak to really the alignment of the talent and the energy of the folks that we have, but in a way that they'll be even more successful in making a positive impact. Because we have plenty of work to do, and we need all of our dedicated talented people to keep working, but in a better way, a way where they can be more successful and where all of that synergy together will provide a really positive impact. Because I really appreciate what Ms. Pastore said about this is an opportunity for us to really move forward. So I just wonder if you could speak to that.
I'm not quite sure I understand what your question is.
Well, so you're talking about a lot of positions and changing and removing some, but we've got some quality folks, you know, experienced, talented employees in those positions. So when we do, when other districts do these implementations, if you can speak to the alignment of the talent with the new organization.
Well, I would like to first agree with you in that you do. Your school system has many talented and devoted staff members. I'm an early riser, and I'll send out an email at 5:30 a.m. thinking that I won't get a response until at least, you know, midday, and before I even go to the next email, I've had a response from some of your staff members. They're working tirelessly. But your central office is not staffed and organized in an appropriate manner. Yes, you have many talented people on staff, some positions and some areas are being duplicated, and some need to be collaborating, and they're not. They're working in silos. So if you read Chapter 1 very carefully, it gives you very specific information and rationale on why we made some of the additions of positions that are critically needed. We eliminated positions that we felt could be combined and/or are not needed. And then we also have a lot of positions that were misaligned, that were in one department or division that should be over in another division. So we think that if the implementation of our reorganization recommendations are implemented, you're going to be running a much more efficient, effective operation that's going to be providing better services to students in the schools.
Thank you. Did anyone else have any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cox, for providing this to us. I'm looking at your 27-page letter talking about suggested implementation timelines and activities. It's very detailed, and there's a lot to it. One of the questions I have, I guess my first question is, is the expectation, I know this is just guidance, but with the timelines that you lay out and the execution, and when you're dealing with an organization, you have a lot of kind of change management activity that you have to manage as you're reorganizing. But we're talking about a few months for significant amounts of these items. Is this, is this timeframe or the suggested implementation plan based on experience that you've seen other, you know, large organizations, like the ones that you benchmarked us against, that they would go through and be successful in the timeframes that you're showing us here?
Yes, the answer is yes. We would not have planned this implementation, suggested implementation plan, if we had not seen it successfully done in other school systems. We also took into consideration that the school system had a malware attack. We also took into consideration COVID has disrupted the school system, but we also believe this is a reasonable timeline for the school system to implement the recommendations.
Well, this is a tremendous amount of information, and I appreciate it. I'll be very honest, I have not read all 700 pages, but I hope to dive into it deeper in the near future. So thank you for your work, and I don't have any more questions at this time.
Thank you.
Dr. Hager?
I have a very quick question. Dr. Cox, this is so impressive. I kind of want you to come and run an efficiency audit of my life now that I see this. This is so well done. But I apologize if I missed it, but when are you sharing the county-level report with them?
That should be out within a month, maybe less, maybe a little more. They are just a few weeks behind this process.
Okay, and have you in the past ever worked with a district and county at the same time as you did with us?
Yes, I have. I've done it in Virginia, school systems, mainly in Virginia.
Okay, no, it just seems like a great opportunity to collaborate, as you mentioned, to make these changes, so thank you.
Yeah, I've worked in numerous states doing these types of studies, and in fact, there are Virginia, Texas, Oklahoma. They all have a statewide, what they call a statewide efficiency review program. In Texas, the districts do not have a choice. The Texas Legislative Budget Board selects the districts based on a number of factors. And in Virginia, the school districts, believe this or not, Dr. Williams, they volunteer for these types of efficiency reviews. And they have an obligation to implement 50% of the recommendations or accrue a minimum of 50% of the cost savings identified in the report, or they have to pay the state back a certain portion of the cost of the study.
And I have a question or comment. Dr. Cox, this is Chair Scott. And again, this is a very good report. I think the part that I found, that I was reading and looking at was the part that referenced, of course, the board. And I would recommend that all board members read that portion because that directly impacts what we do. And we need to take responsibility for some of these things that were, are pointed out in here, because we're the leadership, and you can't go into all of these other areas and look at all of these other things. If there's dysfunction at the top, there's going to be dysfunction all the way down. And I've not really heard, I think one person may have talked about the findings in regards to the board, but I think that, that's on page 59, I think that everybody should read it, but like you said, the results are showing that the school board is clearly dysfunctional, that there's an atmosphere of discord and unprofessionalism, which you, Dr. Cox, saw play out a little while ago. That does not do well for morale. And then even some of your own observations, the agenda is not always followed. Some board members, not all, do not respect the board chair. Items are added at the last minute. A significant amount of time is going into school division operations, which is not within the board's purview. And I think there's almost no amount of parliamentary and training that can train out things like disrespect and racism and things like that that you've mentioned in here that you're seeing. And I just, I think that the board should take ownership for that and read more about your, the findings and everything, but I guess I would just ask, Dr. Cox, there seems to be like a lack of understanding of the difference between governance and asking questions and going into operations. One of the findings you talked about was micromanagement, where you said the board is actually, in numerous instances, the requests or concerns were actually micromanaging responsibilities already assigned to departments or individual employees of the district. What advice or what, I guess, where do you have where, sorry, my question is how board members can learn the difference between operations and governance?
Well, that's a very good question, and I think that MAVE, your Maryland Association of School Boards, is ideal. I actually interviewed Frances Hughes Glenberry, Glenn Denny, I believe her name is.
Glen Denny.
Yes, and they have numerous opportunities for training, either coming there or going to MAVE for the training, that you can even do it online. So those board members that work will have an opportunity to participate. That is your best resource because they have been doing that. That's their job, that's what they do. And, you know, this kind of works both ways. Board members have questions because they're not getting answers. So it may behoove the staff, and as you're developing your board agendas, to have regular updates on transportation, have a regular update on HR, what the problems are facing. What's the financial office doing? Have an agenda item where they're constantly giving you information so that you're, you know, you're not asking so many minute type of operational questions. I think that you're on the right track in developing a civility policy. I know you had a retreat, I have not heard anything about how that past retreat went, but I'm hoping that some starting positions on getting the board to act in unison, it doesn't mean that you have to all agree, but you have to agree to disagree and do it in a civil manner, for the sake of the kids.
Thank you.
I guess my short answer to that is you've got a nationwide, you've got a statewide organization that is skilled in helping boards know the difference between governance and micromanagement. And while the report gives you several examples and some best practices, there's nothing like getting a good solid training from a state organization that knows their business.
All right, thank you for that. Were there additional questions from members for Dr. Cox? Yes, Ms. Clausy?
Dr. Cox, so I'm just wondering in terms of, and again, I didn't get to read all of the 800 report, but what is our next step, as a board?
As the board, you need to have the set your bedside table with the light on and a cup of coffee. You need to be able to download it, get a hard copy, put stickies on it with questions, and become very familiar with it because it gives you, it's, I had one superintendent say, this is my playbook. He is a big football fan, he says, this is my playbook. You know, I could have never gotten all of this information from all of these divisions and departments in such a short period of time. So you should, number one, become very familiar with the report. Two, question and ensure that there is an implementation plan in place. Find out if the recommendations are going to be implemented as recommended, are they going to be modified, and if they are going to be modified, how are they going to be modified? And the board should be, and the school system should be appointing one person to oversee each of these chapters and periodically, if not every board meeting, reporting on the progress of the implementation of the recommendations. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, Ms. Mack has a follow-up question?
Sure.
Dr. Cox, just like the exchange that you had with Mr. McMillian where he needs clarity on an issue, is there a period of time when board members could ask clarifying questions of you if they don't understand something? And if there is a period of time, what is that period of time and what would be the vehicle for doing that?
Yes, I will take questions from board members and staff for at least a week and probably a little bit past that. I mean, it has to be a date certain. I am an educator, I want you to be successful because your success is my success in being able to do more of these for other school systems. So please feel free to email me. While it's fresh in my mind, would like to have the majority of your questions within a week's period from today's date. That doesn't mean to say if Dr. McComas runs into an issue down the line in implementing one of the recommendations in curriculum and instruction, that she can't pick up the phone and call me or email me and get some feedback and assistance.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cox. And Dr. Williams would like to make a closing statement before we wrap up.
So let me begin by sharing excerpts of a letter that I provided to Team BCPS earlier today. The full text of the letter is available to the public in Board Docs. When I joined Baltimore County Public Schools in 2019, my aim was to listen and learn in order to highlight successful practices and identify our path towards progress. Over the next year, this led to the creation of a new strategic plan, the compass, our pathway to excellence, development of a trajectory for college and career readiness, accountability tools, including school-specific achievement targets in English Language Arts and Mathematics, a revised school progress planning process, a teaching and learning framework, and a course performance dashboard to signal a shift to focus to learning accountability and results. That's focus area one of our compass. In March 2020, as a system, we worked to address the emergent needs of a global pandemic followed by a cyber attack in November 2020. Despite these challenges, my goal then, as it is now, has been continuous improvement, investment in staff professional learning and growth, and the development of a culture of respect. As superintendent, I welcome the recommendations of Public Works LLC report as a continuation of our effort to achieve improved outcomes on behalf of students and work together to make Baltimore County Public Schools a premier system in the state of Maryland. We thank the county executive for financing this $1.2 million review of our system and county government. This is not an audit, this is an efficiency review. We look forward to other opportunities to partner around the commonalities in our reports. Correspondingly, my team and I have begun the work of aligning the report recommendations with the needs of our system at this time. The resulting plan will include the following three items. One, significant cost savings based on operational efficiency. Identified savings will draw from the report recommendations and align with the blueprint for Maryland's future. Additional savings will be communicated as we continue to examine the report. Two, a reorganization of central office staff to ensure the effective and efficient provision of services to schools that is respectful of the expertise and talent of dedicated members of Team BCPS. And three, a comprehensive collaborative plan to improve staff morale, communication, and stakeholder satisfaction. Development of this plan will include union presidents, executive director, PTA, and student leadership. Based on the preliminary review, cost savings can range from six to seven million in one year, totaling a minimum of $33 to $35 million over five years. So within the next 30 days, I will be convening a multi-stakeholder steering committee to work across divisions. They will identify prerequisite implementation tasks, examine findings, modify recommendations as applicable, and develop a detailed timeline for each division. So as we move through this process, we will apply a study approach with specific emphasis on the seven peer districts. on the seven peer districts identified in the Public Works study. We will also benchmark ourselves against similarly situated districts across the nation. It is important to work within the budgetary cycles while ensuring that there is no disruption of services and supports to schools and families. Must remind you all, when I arrived in B C P S, people shared the disruption that was wrought from a reorganization prior to my arrival. For this reason, I took the time to listen and learn during my first 100 days. Relationships matter. Division and offices are made of people, people who have devoted their energy, commitment, and professional careers to Baltimore County Public Schools. As the leader, I acknowledge that this will be a time of discomfort for many. The manner that we go about doing the work with careful attention to the precision, transparency, and compassion will help us to move forward in rebuilding a culture of respect for all. So I look forward to providing a detailed update at the September 20th Board of Education meeting. Thank you, Dr. Cox, for your time and your leadership. Thank you, Public Works, and thank you, Johnny Ochesky, for financing this review. Thank you, board.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And thank you, Dr. Cox, for your time.
Thank you. That was music to my ears, Dr. Williams. Thank you for sharing that.
Thanks. Okay, and so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, is board member comments, including proposed agenda items for future board meetings, and we'll start with Ms. Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a long meeting, so I'm not going to comment, other than to say that in light of this efficiency audit, and the fact that schools are reopened, and we've made significant progress on the ransomware attack, that I would like to see this board revisit its previous decision not to have student achievement a regular part of our agenda. I think it's important that student achievement be the focus of our work, and having it as a standing agenda item is an important thing to consider.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe. Ms. Clausy?
Thank you. I just want to dovetail with what Dr. Williams started with earlier. I was thrilled to visit all six of the schools on opening day, with Dr. Williams, school system leaders, community leaders, and then everyone in the schoolhouse. It was great to get back to Lockraven High School, met our new state superintendent, Mohammed Choudre, the county executive was there, and, you know, it was just great the rest of the day, visiting Cockeysville Middle, Scotts Branch, Catonsville Elementary School, Mars Estate, and Sandalwood with our student member of the board. That was really fun. I went to the Maryland State Fair and Agricultural Society, who reinstated their Baltimore County Government luncheon, and that was great to, you know, in a safely mitigate it in distance way, to reconnect with people and engage with so many people in the government that really helped the school system and helped the community just to grow and make progress. So that was really nice. I did appreciate, earlier this evening, hearing from Logan Tao from Delaney High School, who's the student member of the Central Area Education Advisory Council, and I thought that he had some really great things to say about getting engaged with retired teachers and other professionals coming in, for students to start learning about their futures as early as elementary school, and then also talking about having more cultural awareness opportunities, and maybe talking about expanding the global language programs in our school system. I look forward to the upcoming MAVE conference. It was canceled last year, like most of our lives, but we're getting back there in a safe way. I would just encourage everyone, as we are trying to protect those five days of in-school instruction, for people to still stay safe and make good decisions about their health and the health of others. I do appreciate that, while some of the homecoming activities that traditionally occur around this time are not safe to do so, but that there are many activities that the schools are going to be able to do. So thank you, Dr. Williams and staff, for making those arrangements.
Thank you.
And have a good evening, everyone.
Ms. Mack?
Yes, I would like to support what Ms. Rowe said, and what Dr. Cox said. I believe, and have always believed, that we should be talking about outcomes for our students, because as Dr. Cox said, everybody else is doing a role, but nothing else really matters if we're not meeting the needs of our students. So I would like to have that revisited. I would like to say, as I've walked through the neighborhood, I'm within walking distance of three schools, and it makes me very happy to see kids outside. It looks to me like schools are taking advantage of outdoor time to mitigate the spread of disease, to give kids some freedom, and it's just very encouraging that our kids are back in school, and I appreciate all that everybody has done to make that happen. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. McMillian?
I'm not sure if the efficiency review has done an in-depth study of the Office of Internal Audit. I would like that to be revisited. I support Andrea Barr, Chief Auditor, and the 10 members of the Office of Internal Audit 100%. We have a system of 18,000 employees, including teachers. That department is, I think they're overworked, and there's talk about cutting them. I think they're an integral part of our system, and we need that department to stay intact. Our next audit committee meeting is one week from today, Tuesday, September 21st, from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Joss.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through my two-week itinerary, but I would like to echo what Mrs. McMillian just said, that the Office of Internal Audit, and I serve as the vice chair for the Audit Committee, is, they're excellent staff over there, that does an excellent job, they fall under the board, and I would like to reiterate that they do have the support of the Audit Committee, and hopefully the board as well. I would like to see in the agenda, the handbook coming in for approval, because we've been asked multiple times, including the efficiency report just stated, we need a handbook, as well as the OIG. Office of Inspector General has requested us to update. It's almost two years, and I would like to see that in the next agenda. So thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Joss. Next is Ms. Hen.
Thank you. I want to call out two commendations of the Public Works efficiency report that I appreciated. One is our partnership with Baltimore County Government for the School Resource Officer Program. That's something I, yes, that deserves. I want to thank our SROs and Baltimore County Government for continuously supporting that program, and to B C P S for supporting that. There were some incidents this past week, but they were handled beautifully by our administrators and by our school resource officers, so I truly appreciate that, and appreciate Public Works' recognition of the success of that program. I also appreciate our data dashboards, which were also a success that was pointed out in the Public Works report. In preparing to review the state capital request, I found myself using our data dashboards quite a bit, and appreciating the information that was available. And as a board, I feel we need to take full advantage of those tools that are available to us, and lead by example. When we talk about the use of data and our schools using data, I think as leaders, we need to make full use of the tools that are available to us, and minimize our requests of staff by using the tools that they have already built, and that are available to staff. So I believe any opportunities that the board can receive for training on those tools, if you haven't used them, they are quite good, and there's quite a lot of information out there already at our fingertips. In terms of agenda items, I will reiterate what Ms. Rowe and Ms. Mack have said. I believe that a standing agenda item should be student achievement, and that we need to discuss that at every meeting. I would also like to see a standing agenda item for an update on the implementation of the Public Works. So thank you all, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hen. And next is, looks like Mr. Thomas Haslaw. Mr. Offerman, are you there? Mr. Offerman, if you're there, you may be muted. Okay, we'll come back to him. Ms. Pastor?
Okay, hopefully, third time is the charm. Blueprint for Maryland's Future is the law. It is not an invitation, it is not an option, it is very prescriptive. So while you're reading the efficiency report, add in 200 and some more pages and read it, because there is a very salient reason that MAVE has an ad hoc committee, because it's not only going to change the way schools are run, it's going to change the board and what boards do. We need to read it, we need to understand it. It is complicated, but we need to embrace it. Add it to your reading materials, because you're going to keep hearing. For everyone's report, they're going to say, "Blueprint for Maryland's Future." They're going to make that connection. We, as the board, need to understand exactly what that means. Let me say it for the fifth time. This is not invitational, it is the law. Have a good e, oh, no, no. Internal audit, integral part to what the blueprint is asking, because it has the potential for digging deep into all of the things that we need to do. It is side by side with this efficiency report. They must stay intact. Now, good night, have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Pastor. Next is Dr. Hager.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we spent most of the night talking about two reports that were brought to us by external unbiased groups, the MyIPass, and then the sufficiency review. And we all are sitting around this table, and most of us have not been around for the decades that led to the point where we are right now, where we need these two reports. But I'm really excited and really optimistic, because they do give us a playbook of how we can move forward, and I think that this is a great time to be part of a system and a board like this right now. Between that and the blueprint that Ms. Pastor just mentioned, I think we have a lot to look forward to moving forward. And then, as far as agenda items, I want to echo the foreign language offerings, perhaps part of curriculum committee, I'm not sure if that would be a good fit there, and the handbook that Ms. Joss mentioned, we desperately need that, and the academic achievement as a standing agenda item.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn?
All right, I'm going to try and be brief. As far as agenda items go, I'm hopeful that we can put perhaps the blueprint for Maryland on an agenda soon, and maybe Ms. Pastor could lead that conversation, and get us all a 200-page copy of it, so we can start reading it, be prepared. So we're just, what, a week in of school, and I think that's fantastic. I'm hoping for fall weather to come soon, at least football's here. So with that, I'm going to stop talking, and hopefully, we've got three minutes till midnight. Maybe we can finish before then.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kuhn. And I would just say, I echo everything that you're saying. I would just advise, again, like I said, for board members to read the portion that talks about board governance, the difference between operations and governance and policy, and our role as board members. Because I think there is a way to have a discussion about academic achievement without micromanaging staff, and without going into operations. There is a way that we can do that, I think we just have to review and take some of the recommendations, so that we can have the tools, so that we can be effective in what we're doing, and provide the kind of leadership that this system deserves. So, that's it. Mr. Offerman, did you come back on? No? Okay. All right, and last but not least, it looks like, the last item on the agenda is announcements. The board's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 28, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. Thank you for joining us tonight, and the meeting is now adjourned.